Yes, we just have a trip on Monday. The ninth grade Academy of Digital Arts students in Geometry 21 are going to the Museum of Mathematics and the Vuhlerheim in New York City. And the paperwork came in a little late for us to get it on the agenda.
All right. I'm sorry, what was the date on that?
It's Monday, the 31st. Thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to be heard on that? All right, thank you, thank you for noticing. A report of the chair, do you want to have a report tonight? Superintendent's report, Dr. Costino.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I want to first begin by letting you know it is Board of Education Recognition Month. And so you have these beautiful flowers and candy at your place. Mr. Rivera's art class did them at the high school. And so I hope that you treasure them. We appreciate all you do. And so, thank you for your service to our community. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Please thank him and his students for making this.
Absolutely. We definitely will. We have correspondence in here. I just included a little note from Mr. Camp, who sent a letter to the office. So we wanted you to have that. So that's in there. We have two personnel who have resigned. Kelly Von Jew, who is a counselor, who's going to Litchfield. And Deborah Boucher has another position. I wanted to share with you, it was in your packet, what Gary Bershue, our board attorney, has shared in regard to the general rules for the use of public funds, et cetera, when there is a referendum pending. When I spoke to him at length, the thing that he really stressed to me is that the rule really applies to spending public funds. Okay? So the board certainly can share information as a board. They continue to do so, but we cannot spend any funds to, in favor or against the referendum. When the committee meets next week with the attorney, we can also, at that point, talk about signs we want to purchase for, you know, vote April 29th, that we can put around the towns, et cetera. One of the things I did want to share with you, that he also told me, was that as a board member, you do not give your, up your right as a taxpayer and a public citizen. So in that role, you can really do whatever you see fit, but as a board of education, we should really not spend funds and just share facts. So with that said, you can read through it and go on from there.
That's it? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Doc.
I was wondering if there is any plan to have board members address the community? Is there any kind of through communications forums? I know the forums were done prior to us approving, you know, the resolutions, but I think there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Absolutely. I was, in the next week, I was going to meet with, matter of fact, I'm trying to get a meeting next week with the architects to try to plan out a schedule of when they could also be involved. And then I was going to send it to all board members to see if they wanted to sign up. I have the current schedule for softball and baseball in the region. Maybe, you know, again, going to the different towns on a Saturday morning. And the architects and the project manager are willing to go with us. And again, you can share information. You cannot advocate either way. So I'm working on that.
Peter.
I have a question. I don't know if it's pertinent, but one of the problems I have with the architects is that I ask for a different plan. And what they kept doing is modifying the existing plan that they started out with. And am I correct in stating that the building that is being placed in front of the public is not necessarily the building that would be built?
Well, I think it certainly is a good facillim, facsimile of it. I think what the architect explained to you is that you can make changes once you have, if it, if the referendum passes, Chair will appoint a building committee. At that point, they can make changes as best they see.
Well, when I say change, I don't mean changing what they presented to us, but I mean a change in the entire physical plan.
I don't think we're leaning in that direction.
Okay.
But certainly, I think, you know, it can be a discussion. I think the issue that comes up is you have to stay within the budget and you have to stay within the size of the building, because all of those numbers, et cetera, are going to the state for reimbursement. I think there's some wiggle room. I wouldn't say that we would start from ground zero, because I think that building has a lot of support from different people. And it was hard to really meet everyone's needs. You couldn't really please everyone.
I'm not going to belabor the issue.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I ask, how does it work as far as not spending district funds to have the architects
present at like a softball game or a village store? Because they're hired with district funds, aren't they? So isn't their presence already spending district funds?
Well, as far as I'm aware, everything was spent already. So it's, once the referendum is passed, you cannot spend any more district funds. So that was like included in their package, but I will check with counsel. Because I said to them, can we put out the posters? And he said, yes. The, our Gary Bershue, can I put out in the region review the pictures that the architects did? Yes, you can. It's information. So it's just, you know, if they would, they're not going to advocate, they would be there to answer questions. I will get it, I'll check again tomorrow, and I could share that with the board, but that was my understanding.
Greg.
Yeah, having reviewed those contracts, my recollection is that they're flat fee contracts for pre-referendum services. They were, it wasn't an amount not to exceed, it was just a flat fee. And if that's the case, then the money's already been committed and expended. We ought to check that with Gary Bershue. He should review the contract. He should make sure that that recollection is correct, that it's a flat fee that's already been incurred and spent, as opposed, and they're just simply coming without any expectation of being paid for that money.
Right. And that was the reason why, one of the reasons I wanted the meeting next week, so that I could really get the input from the architects and the project manager before the meeting, where we're going to meet with our attorney also. So that's what we're up to.
Anything else?
That's it. We have a exciting education agenda tonight, so I guess we can start with Mrs. Gallo and then...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Kim, I'm sorry, just one second. I just, with regard to the report of the chair, Dr. Costantino reminded me of something. I had said at the last meeting that I would appoint a committee to look at the issue of the public information that would be made available at the referendum. And we've done that. It's going to be me and Greg and Susan Stumpf. We have a meeting scheduled for April 8th at the central office with our attorney to go over that. Susan has raised a question for me tonight as to what's permitted under the statute with regard to that. I, it was the first time I've heard it, so I'm not sure of the answer, but I just wanted to report that that has been done. So with that said, all right, moving on to item five. Thank you.
Good evening. Happy Board Appreciation Day, Week, Month, whatever it is. We got to the goods, so I think we're in good shape. And you can, mostly that effort was led by Kendall Ross, who I've already thanked in person, but I just thought I should say her name out loud. She really coordinated making these. These are wire sculptures. One of the things that Mr. Rivera brings to our school is an extensive and wide background in art, which includes large metal sculptures, and he brings some of that to our classrooms. And that's an example of a very minor project that they do that we thought would be nice for this occasion. I'm here to talk to you not just about the middle schools, it says on the agenda, but about Chippag Valley School update, where we are, what's been happening, the changes that have taken place and how we're adapting to them. Vertical alignment is our first and foremost goal, obviously because of Common Core and also because we are aligning as a 612 school, so that there is this vertical alignment of curriculum all the way through, so that everything continues to build on the year before. Lori is absolutely spearheading that effort on the school level, and Teresa is obviously is the overarching person to lead this effort. So vertical alignment is aligning our curriculum, our assessment. When parents look at report cards, they can look at formative, interim, and summative assessments, which makes a lot of sense, because they can look at, did we have multiple repeated exposures before we got to an interim assessment? And did we, how did we do on the interim assessment when we got to the major summative assessment? Those big projects and assessments that tell us if you're on track with learning, what we want you to know and be able to do. So this makes perfect sense to our parents, and it's being done vertically throughout, throughout the building. Lori and our teachers have completed the English and Social Studies sixth, grade six through 11 curriculum, and that started in September. So it's a pretty monumental task, and that is done. Senior English will be completed this summer. Lori's beginning world languages next week. Teresa has engaged consultants to come in from Creck and other places to lead our math department. Consultants have met with our art department. And science is going to begin this summer. And then Teresa, Lori, and I are going to sit down and map out the summer curriculum that is going to be developed. So we will be in very good shape, first of all, for our instruction, first and foremost, and second of all, for the NEAS review in March of 2015. I think that once you look at developmental, once you look at the vertical alignment, you realize that, yes, we are one school, and we take that very seriously. We're doing a lot of things to promote that. But we also need to honor developmental differences. We are two schools within, under one roof, and by operating as a 612 school, we cannot forget to honor those developmental differences. And one of the stories that I've told the parents all the time is, if you can picture your sixth grader asking a 12th grader to sign his or her yearbook, and that looking like normal behavior, then okay, we don't have two schools. And I think pretty much everybody understands that, you know, little tiny guy, big bearded man. It doesn't work like that. So we, in order to honor those developmental differences, first and foremost, we do that through instruction. As we plan our curriculum, we're planning it for the age group to which we're presenting this material, and, you know, how much do we want them to know? What do we, where do we want to introduce material, and when do we want them to have it mastered? All of those things are very, very important. I think that one thing that we realize, you know, it's a, it's a big step from middle, from elementary school to middle school, and that is especially true in such a small community, when you have had a small number of kids with you for many years, and now you go to a big school where you don't know everyone. That's number one. And number two, you're changing classes and you're doing a lot of movement within the building. That's a big change for our kids. And one of the things that we realize is the concept of team leaders that we kind of put aside when we made this change. It's a, it's a very important concept, and I have recommended to Dr. Costantino in next year's budget, that we bring those team leaders back, so that we have people whose focus is to look at those transition issues, to look at children as a whole, to look at and honor those developmental differences. So that's one of the things that I wanted to say to you, that we're realizing we can do better, and also continue to honor those developmental differences. Our core values and beliefs is a very exciting thing that we're developing. You've heard about this before, I presented them to you before. When we suddenly became a 612 school instead of a 912 school, we had to find a way, without starting everything from scratch, to say, these need to be everyone's core values and beliefs. Now, again, we couldn't start the same research-based process that we began with. We couldn't, because we would be far too far behind, and we need to have that ready in time for the NEAS review. Plus, it's, you need to operate under a set of values. That's very important. So our big question was, we had core values and beliefs that the middle school staff readily agreed to have become part of our culture as a whole, but remembering honoring those developmental differences, how do we make those accessible to the middle school students? Our staff underwent a process where we turned each of these, these bulleted items that are very important to us, that we want all students to know and be able to do by the time that they graduate. We turned those into essential questions, and you'll see the results of that. I'll be presenting it to you in either May or June. And you'll see how you can take that language and make sure that it's accessible to the, both of those developmental levels. And also, our elementary principals have agreed to have the core values and beliefs for our upper-level students in every elementary classroom, so that students will be exposed to this common language from K through 12, which is very exciting. It's a very positive way to educate our students. And you can look forward to more information about that from me in May or June, when we propose these school-wide rubrics that we've developed as part of our graduation requirements. You'll hear more about that later. And a lot of this year has been about changes, and I'm here to tell you how well these changes are going in Chippag Valley School. I am going to point you to the Dana Walker editorial. It's going to be in the District Magazine that Alan is working on, and it has been in Region and Review. Dana's, Dana was a very vocal, had some very vocal concerns during the process of changing the schedule, and she wrote a wonderful editorial about how, about how well it's going, and how she thought it was going to be really hard, and what she realizes is that it brings more opportunities to her. And I think that's, first of all, I think it's great that everything is going well. That's something that's my responsibility, and I like to know that it's going well. But I think more importantly, what it shows is our students as thinkers, that they go through a very difficult process, that they bring up their concerns, and then they go ahead and experience it, and they're not afraid to say, I didn't think it all through. It's going very well. And I feel very good about that, and the message it sends to our communities about our students as thinkers, because they're very good ones. And then our Chrome, the Chromebooks, which is another big change, they're consistently in use from grade six through 11. One of the things that I really like about it is, I send the kids, I call them Gallograms, kind of cheesy, but they think it's cute, and I send them a little message out, great work on this, have you thought about this? Things that I want them to know. And I now regularly get emails from students, whether they want information, or they want to answer something that I've said. They're feeling very comfortable to do that with me, and I really like that. You know, they're, they're very funny. One of my favorites this year was a boy who emailed me with an impending storm and said, do you think we're going to have school tomorrow? Which you really know that the question is, do I have to do my homework tonight? And I wrote, I wrote back in a nice way that I really wouldn't count on that storm, because you never know when it's going to go off to sea. And he took the time to say, thank you for taking the time to answer my email. And I thought that was not only very polite, but it was, it was just very cute. I'm very lucky to have six through 12 graders that I can communicate with. So the changes that have been, that have been underway in the school have happened very quickly for folks. I think we all know that grownups adjust a little bit less well than our children, but our children are doing a very nice job with that. And Dr. Costantino, and I thought it was very important to update you on this good news. The only thing that, as I said, was the team leaders that we need to look at. The only thing that we need to look at with the schedule is, we've limited some of the time for AP courses, and we're probably going to need to take a more creative approach to getting those kids more time in their classes. And we will be doing that. So in the interest of balance, those are probably the two big things that we're looking at. And our transition issues as well are things that we want to look at very, very intensely, so that we make sure that we continue to honor those developmental differences. Okay? Are there, anyone ask me any questions?
Peter.
I have a question for the superintendent. I've been watching the state legislative channel, and the word...
I'm sorry, hold on, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Are you done, Kim?
I am done. Next thing we do is introduce...
Well, as relative, the principal brought up the word Common Core. And I, and watching the state channel, I was very confused, because I got the impression that it was somewhere in limbo, because there were big crowds presenting the concept of not having the Common Core, and the legislative body was sitting there, listening to people for, pro, and con. So now the principal brought up this fact that we're working on the Common Core. Now, where are we?
Well, I'll give you a short answer, because at the retreat next week, we're going to go over the Common Core state standards with you. We are moving forward with the Common Core state standards, as is the state of Connecticut and many states across the country. The CCSS has gotten a bad rap from some people, and they've politicized it in a way that really is not good for kids. The Common Core standards are a set of standards. We've always had standards. So this is just new standards that have looked at what we do in America. They have, instead of doing a mile wide of stuff, we go deeper into topics. We have raised the level of the reading comprehension for students. We are working on more collaborative learning, communication skills, problem solving, critical thinking. The standards do not tell you how to teach or what to teach. So teachers and educators still have the flexibility to be creative, to do what they want in the classroom, but they have to achieve these standards. And that's what we've always done. It's a shame that we're spending so much time debating the Common Core state standards, because they really are very good. And next week, you will get a full presentation by Teresa, by Teresa DeBrito.
So the state has passed this piece of legislation?
Yes. This is, yes. Maybe two years, three years ago.
Oh, yeah, this has been around for much longer.
Four years ago. Thank you. Four years ago. So we've been working on them.
Anything else for Gallo? I'm sorry, it's two.
I would just like to say, I appreciate all the hard work. I hear the hard work in developing the curriculum. And a little more specific to Peter's point, I understand that today Indiana decided to back away from the Common Core standard after having adopted them for four years. So to continue to communicate the breadth of the Common Core standards and what that means for the students very specifically, I think it could be very helpful going forward.
That's a very good point.
It could be a little unnerving to hear that, you know, people are on a negative way, but it's, it's, it's a good thing.
Mm-hmm. We can do that.
You talk.
And I noticed that in the newspaper this week, it stated that Region 14 is going to have some public information session for various levels of students, led by the principals and other curriculum coordinators.
We've done that, so we can do more of it.
Yeah, as much as we can, because there's still confusion out there about the difference between standards.
Absolutely. Yes. We could definitely do more of that. That's a very good point. I'll note that, and Teresa and I will start planning more of that.
Anything else? Yeah, Greg.
Kim, you mentioned, I mean, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if I was following these, these questions on transitions and what you're seeing. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that? I know we had been concerned a few years ago about sort of the, the way in which there were, you know, there were some concerns about the level of performance and the, and the student performance as, as they arrived at middle school. It seemed to, seemed to take a step down. I'm wondering if, if you're still seeing that, if you're still seeing some of the issues we talked about maybe three, four years ago.
When, when students enter middle school, they're entering a big change in their lives. And I can, I can tell you from the perspective of having been in a much larger system, where students were drawn from nine elementary schools, down to our little system where they're drawn from three. One of the things that happens for kids, first of all, is they're, they're meeting very new students. We have very little transition in terms of, this person moves away, this person changes schools, this kind of stuff. We're a very constant population, which is a great thing. That's one of the really good things about our system. So when our students come to middle school, the first thing that they're doing is, two-thirds of their sixth grade population are students that they don't know. That's an inaccurate, each of the schools have a different size, but we'll just look at it as three lumps, because I'm not going to do the math in my head and get it wrong. So they come up and they, and they know very different kids. They've been in a very small, you know, little fishbowl, which has lots and lots of benefits, but now they're coming to a school where they don't know a whole lot of kids. Time and attention has to be paid to that, in terms of making relationships with kids that you don't know. You know, the competitiveness for friends that is in every single school. We watch things that you might think of as silly, like who's sitting with whom at the cafeteria tables? Are they comfortable? Is there anybody that's on their own, or looks a little lost in there? All of these things are things that we pay very close attention to. And at the same time, this year, we went to a 612 school. So we were getting our sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders used to eating their breakfast with the big kids. And we very carefully, you know, you don't put walls up, but we asked our high school's kids to stay kind of to this side, there's a natural break, and then our middle school kids are on one side as well, which makes them a little bit more comfortable. They're sitting with their peers. Educationally, the thing that's happening for them is that they are not in one classroom all day, that they are changing classes, they're changing them at what can feel like a rapid rate when you're in sixth grade. You know, I'm here and then I'm there, I'm six, seven different places in the same, in the same day. And I need to adjust to the different, while we have some uniformity in our rules, of course, each teacher has their no, his or her own nuance, their own way of doing things. These are the things that we have to pay attention to, and it is a very big step up. It was a very big step up when I was in a big school system, where you could remain anonymous, and try, but I think it's a little bit bigger in a small system where nobody's anonymous. So we have to pay attention to that. Yes?
Let me ask you another question. How are they, how are students doing at handling the, you know, the group dynamics of a larger classroom? Because obviously, most of them are coming out of classrooms that are much smaller, in terms of the number of students, until they get to the middle school, and then they're what? Those classrooms average, I don't know, more than 20, isn't it?
Yeah, it's more than 20.
So if you're, if you're coming out of a classroom of 10 or 12, and then you're in a classroom of 20, 25, whatever the number is, does that present any challenges?
It does. I think our, when our, our students are used to coming from smaller environments, where it's not as important to raise your hand every time you speak, because you really are in a tight little group where everybody knows each other, which is very nice. But now you have to start interacting with these 20, 24, 25 students in the room, and you have to, you know, be much more cognizant of waiting your turn, making, making sure everybody gets one. You know, for some students, it's very difficult to be in that classroom. Once they make that transition, I think it's, it's very good for them to have a lot of different minds to bounce again. And I relate it, you know, I play tennis, tennis has been my lifelong sport. If I only played the same person in tennis my whole life, I wouldn't get any better. So I know that it's, it's a good transition to pull them through, and we have a lot of different avenues to help them. But it is an issue, and we have to continue to pay attention to it.
Thank you. Yep, Jeff.
I just wanted to thank you for the recognition of the importance of team leader, because I know for me, as a parent, I really miss that this year.
What made you miss it as a parent? I'm sorry, I have a question.
Well, I just, I just, for me, loved when, last year, having a team leader, knowing that as a parent, I could go and go to one person and kind of kill many birds with one stone. And so I really miss... And so, I really missed that this year in terms of having that one go-to person. So, I appreciate the fact that that is being addressed and hopefully being integrated again next year. So, thank you for that.
Sure.
I just wanted to say, Kim, just kind of following up on what Greg was asking, I appreciate the comment that you made. I'm not, I'm sure I'm not quoting you exactly, but that children, young people are much more amenable to change than adults are. In my own work, I have found young people, children, to be much more resilient to change than adults are, so.
That's been pretty consistent throughout my career. It's not a short one. So, I'm pretty convinced of that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to introduce Sheila Gambino and her cast of characters that are going to tell us all about Project Lead the Way. Thank you, Sheila.
Welcome.
Well, we're very excited to be here tonight. As you may remember from last year, we are talking about Project Lead the Way, which is a very exciting program that Teresa DeBrito brought to us last year along with me to teach in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Just wait a second for a projector to warm up here. And I'd like to call up my sixth grade team while we're waiting. So, here you see a couple of pictures of students in class doing some different things, building Vex robots, using a 3D modeling program, videotaping some of their progress, again, building Vex robots, and participating in pre-engineering challenges, which are just like design challenges. They're giving certain materials, and they have to come up with some kind of a design to solve a problem. The goals of the program really are to provide a rich introduction to engineering, to increase rigor and critical thinking, and to develop college and career readiness skills. And we teach students to communicate clear messages in many, many, many ways. We use engineering notebooks, and they share their notebooks with each other, and they try to communicate their ideas through the engineering notebooks, which they learn their drugs have to be really specific, and they have to have precision measurements if somebody were to be able to pick up the notebook and recreate their design. We do, you know, the basic word processing spreadsheet and presentation tools are really embedded throughout everything we do. We have created collaborative websites. We work on sharing ideas with others in verbal communication, written communication, and digital presentations. We do class presentations, demonstrations. We've built many models and prototypes, and we work really hard this year specifically at collaborating on solutions now that we have Google because Google is very collaborative digital work environment. So, you'll see some of the works that our wonderful students have done with the Google model. We have, you know, joined forces with the high schools. So, we've adopted the high schools' guiding beliefs in our area for solving problems and engaging in the critical process. These are the areas that our discipline is really responsible for, instilling in our students, getting them ready for high school. So, our sixth grade design and modeling class uses a program called Autodesk Inventor, which you saw a little bit of last year, but we have really a new addition to the family, and that's Dorothy, our 3D printer, which is right here. Dorothy was brought to us, we have to actually thank Fran Valens, another teacher here, who sent us a link and told us about a grant that was available. And, you know, she emailed it to a bunch of us, and Dr. Cosentino said, "This is great. Go for it." So, we did, and we got it within like 48 hours. They funded our grant. So, that was really exciting for us to receive that. And we've added that map to the sixth grade class. And I'll turn over my speeches to the sixth graders so they can tell you a little bit more about what they do in class.
Hi. We are some of the Project Lead the Way students for sixth grade. And in Project Lead the Way, we learn about pre-engineering using the design process and Autodesk Inventor. Autodesk Inventor is a 3D modeling program, and that's what we use to create our models. And sometimes we can print them on the 3D printer. And the design process is a process that helps an engineer design products for the needs and wants of people. It also helps engineers choose the best product idea to satisfy the needs and wants of people.
Here's just a little demonstration on Autodesk Inventor. Somebody want to do that, or do you want me to do it? I know it's a little bit difficult up here because we don't have the mouse set up, and you really need a mouse to use this program, but I think we can get through just a tiny demonstration.
Okay. So, here, we have to create a 2D sketch before we have to do, before we can do anything so that we can lay it out and see how our design is going to look like. So... And here we have our dimensions tool, which tells us, we can use it for how to make it so that we can, like, how much, this we want inch. We can do that, but we can also make it so that we can have this line, let's say 2.5 inches away from the center of the 2D sketch. So, here, once you finish your 2D sketch, you can extrude. Once you do this, you can say you want it like, you want it one inch, and you can choose how long, how far you wanted to cut out. And you can also use this tool to show if you want, if you like put text in here, you can show if you want to cut out or not. And, yeah.
Wow. That's great.
Teddy actually had a really great idea also. He wanted to, well, we really wanted to bring you a gift from our 3D printer. And Teddy came up with this great idea that he was going to make you some nameplates with your names cut out. And we went through the trials and tribulations of getting all your names on these little tiny plaques, but we ran into a couple of problems. So, what were the problems we ran into?
So, when we made it, we didn't know how to make the text large enough, and the 3D printer would print it, and the plastic would get meshed together.
Because the words were like so thin. So, we learned how to make the words a little bit thicker, and we did, we were able to create something, but I'm going to let Paul talk a little bit about how we get the files from the computer to the 3D printer. How did that happen?
Um... You save it as an STL file when they jump right into your computer. And then you X out on Autodesk Inventor.
Nice and loud. Nice and loud. Okay. So, what he's saying is you, can I help you a little bit? Yeah. I'll just repeat everything you said so I'm really loud because your message is not good if people can hear it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, he is saying that you export the file from Autodesk Inventor to this file that's called a STL file, and that enables it to go onto the Makerware software that's compatible with the printer. The Makerware software itself transfers the file into a 3XG file, and then we're able to bring it from a little card, an SD card, onto the 3D printer and print out things. Is that accurate? Was I good? All right. So, we made you something. Teddy's going to pass out some gifts to you. We also made one for Mrs. Gallo.
So, what you're saying, Sheila, is that we, that this printed these. So, you were able to print shapog Spartans, but it choked on the names of the board of Egypt. I guess this will not be the first or last time that occurs.
We do plan on revisiting that project, but the part of the problem was, in order to get your very big names onto little pieces, that piece, Dr. Cosentino, can you hold up your piece? That takes about 45 minutes to print. And Ms. Higginfield, can you hold up your piece? That takes about 35 minutes to print, the little keychains. We got it, we streamlined the process, so we got those to print in about 12 minutes each. So, you know, we didn't have like the extra, like, 42 hours. But we're working on it. Talking about advanced technology.
Thank you very much.
Also, I don't know if we want a demonstration of the 3D printer. It'll buzz as we're talking, so I'm not sure. But we could print something that would take about 20 minutes if you'd like to see it, or we could do it in the interim session between executive and...
It's up to you. If you want to have it run, as long as everybody speaks up so we can hear them, that's fine.
Sure. I think we'll wait until after the presentation, and then we'll invite you up just to show you like how it works. Okay.
So, let's remember that these are sixth graders.
Yes. Excellent. Okay. And it's Teddy. What is everybody else's name? Teddy?
Kira.
Kira and Paul. Excellent. Great job. Thank you. Okay. Here's a picture of another sixth grader who's gone a little bit beyond what we do for the normal class projects, and he really wanted to learn how to put the threading in to two pieces so that they fit together. So, he's experimenting with that and different types of screw thread. So, I'll picture off. This is a class project that everybody does. This is a summative evaluation after they learn a couple of different things with Autodesk Inventor, and then they have to build these pieces separately. This is actually four different pieces, but then they have to assemble them into an assembly file and get them to all fit in the right place with a tool called a constrain tool. But this part right here is really challenging for them because you have to measure it correctly within the assembly file. If it doesn't, it won't extrude the right way. So, that is just a really, really difficult part of the project. Now, we've also gone a little bit further with the 3D printer, and we have a ninth grader, Josh Jordan. The 3D printer is being used in some high school senior projects, but it's also being used with the Skills 21 class. The students are printing out demos of their project. And Josh Jordan got a special project from Mrs. Barksdale's husband, who is a bio-something engineer. I'm not sure what his exact title is, but he works with cell, he like splits cells apart in like little tubes. So, he came to us and he said, "Can we make this disc?" Like, this is a prototype that he's been working on, and he made one out of wood. He carved it out of wood first, and he made one out of plaster, but it fell apart in the water. So, he really wanted us, like a prototype, to be built on the 3D printer. So, he gave Josh these drawings, and Josh came in a couple of days after school, and we worked together, and we figured out how to make these little cones and cut off the tops, and how to make this disc to the exact dimensions that he wanted over here. And he wanted a couple of different models of it so he could test different thicknesses. And he actually is, he actually is testing that out right now. And Josh couldn't be here tonight, so we made you handouts just to tell a little bit about the project that he's working on.
Sheila, if you know, what's the retail price of that printer?
The price of the printer is about $2,400. The filament itself is PLA plant-based filament, which is biodegradable, and that costs about $50 a roll. So, we're planning on making some things that possibly sell in the school store to refund the printer or the filament too, so we can keep our profits going. And the printer also came with a year's tech support and also came with three rolls of filament, so we have filament for a little while. And we also have the disc, which I'll just, like, we only have one disc. He took the other one off, had the disc around the table. So, you can see what a rough draft of the disc looks like. This hasn't really been cleaned up, so I still have a little bit of stuff on it that I have to like scrape off and clean up.
Did Josh get a licensing agreement before he did that?
Right? Next, I would like to call up my wonderful seventh graders, my amazing seventh graders. Come on up. Alisa, Allison. You can all come up with a big time. Don't be scared. They don't bite.
Which one of those guys drove in here tonight?
All right. So, seventh graders made alternative energy websites. Alisa and Allison are going to tell a little bit about their website.
We made a website on solar energy, and we were talking about how it works, the pros and cons of it, and STEM careers. We added videos of how it works, and we started it on YouTube. And we also have pictures inside of that. And you can close here and go to view. And we started it down there. The project took us about two weeks.
Nice and loud.
We worked on it gradually, and one of the parts of the project was to contact or network with an expert. So, we actually made phone calls to companies or suppliers, and we asked some questions about solar energy and their products. I'll just show you the rest of our project. We also have a slide on our opinions about exactly solar energy work. And those are works on it.
So, we made a website on geothermal energy.
Well, basically, we use Google Sites to design the website, and with Google Sites, you can work in a large roof and be on the website at the same time and work on it at the same time, even on different tabs of the website. So, that just made it for more efficient and better way to present the information. And there are many different careers, STEM careers, which are science, technology, engineering, and mathematics.
We also had to contact as well, so we called many different companies, and this was the only one that actually picked up to the...
Well, there was one that picked up, so... But they just put us through to their supervisor, and he didn't really know what he was talking about. Yeah. Kenny had depth of comfort. He was very nice. We were sitting.
We also had to do opinions on our...
Basically, on what we thought about geothermal energy. So, one thing that we had a problem with was inserting the video into the, into the website, and we figured out that if you have to go to edit, you have to edit the page, but instead of just like dragging it onto it, you have to actually go into the insert tab, copy and paste the link to the video, and then if it came up, then it didn't come up sometimes.
It took a while for it to finally show up with the picture. It took a while for it to finally show up with the picture.
You gonna show us the video? Go for it.
Christian found this video.
So here's the Earth. In countries like Canada, seasons come and go. In the summer months, it can be quite warm, and in the winter, it's very cold. While the temperature of the surface of the Earth changes with the seasons, the temperature of the ground below the surface does not. Even at just two meters under the ground, it is about fifteen degrees Celsius, all year round. Geothermal takes advantage of this consistent temperature and uses it to heat homes. So how does it work? First, a large hole is made into the ground and filled with a series of pipes. A special heat-absorbing fluid constantly runs through the pipes. In the winter, heat from the ground is absorbed into the pipes and pushed upwards, where it can be circulated throughout the house. In the summer, the process is reversed. Heat from the house is absorbed into the pipes and pushed downwards, where it can be stored within the cooler earth. So what are the benefits of geothermal heating? Well, for one, you can save a lot of money. Geothermal uses way less energy to operate. This means the heating bill is up to seventy percent lower than that of a traditional heating system. Secondly, geothermal uses no fossil fuels like oil or gas, and is therefore one hundred percent non-polluting.
Yeah, well, here from Kenny Adeko, he told us that it would require two thousand square feet of land and, uh, for one system. And, uh, but if you had five hundred more than that, then you have to install two systems. But we asked him about the one system, and he said that it would cost four thousand dollars, four hu- forty, forty thousand dollars to install the whole system because you'd need to install a well and the pipes. But the federal government will reimburse twelve thousand, so the customer will only pay twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Interesting, yeah. Good job.
Okay, I'm Jack Kennedy.
I'm Mike Kloski.
And we studied wind power, made a website on it on Google Sites. And for our title, that was, that was a good part of it because we custom made that in Photoshop. We got the images and we Photoshop the words together and invented a banner. We had to get the right dimensions, it was kind of tough, but we ended up making it work.
And there's many pros and cons to wind power, but I think the pros could be like very helpful and beneficial to the earth, and it's, it's free and it captures a lot of energy that can be used efficiently, and it doesn't cause a lot of pollution or greenhouse gases.
Well, we had our pictures here. I don't know why they're not showing up.
Yeah, I saw them today, too. I could vouch for them.
You cited our pictures?
Yeah, hit show content on the bottom.
Show content at the bottom, see down there?
Yeah, maybe that's... That's okay.
So I studied how it works, and I found a website that told the whole process about how they work, and I found it really interesting how it's basically, you have to build it first, but after that, it causes no emissions. And basically, the wind pushes the turbine around, and that goes into a generator which stores the power, and it's sensitive through grids and powers people's homes.
You should try the school power again.
We interviewed a person from Oklahoma.
Um, they were a residential wind turbine company, and they made personal wind turbines to power single homes. And they were very nice, and we had a whole interview with them. They told us how much they would cost, and that depended on the size, the size of the home, and like how many homes a single wind turbine could power.
Like how much, yeah, also like how much of the wind energy, it's like a lot of it's used, also you need to mix up.
It said you should, wind power is not like always a one energy source, you should always mix, and that's, it's probably not the future of American energy, but it could be, play a big role in it.
Especially for like third world countries, it's very helpful. As we said before, wind power isn't very consistent at times, and it could be hard for cities to rely on it, but for like many towns, it could work well. Connecticut doesn't allow wind turbines?
They have banned like projects that are happening, trying to happen right now, but we think that they should allow it to have a cleaner future.
Yeah, because like all the states and this country, like if we could all like get to use it, then maybe we could just start using it fully.
And here's our website page.
I'd like to just address the opinions page also on the, on the project. This is, this came into effect this year. This is something new that I've done because of Common Core, and part of Common Core is that students can link information or link out to other sources, but also that they can connect their ideas to the research that they find. So we did this exercise called if this, then that, and so, so they have to find some facts, and then they have to make some conclusions about the facts that they find, and that kind of, you know, helps them to connect their ideas to the information that they're finding. Next, I would like to introduce Elena Devan and Abigail, who made some video games in Scratch. Just to get them on the video game, this could be a little tricky sometimes getting into this.
So, my name's Elena, and we had to make video games about alternative energy. So the alternative energy sources that I used in my video game were wind power, solar power, and biomass. So, in my game, it started off with the instructions, and you had to find like the hidden coins to get enough money. And then it's called Lollipops for Energy, because when you get enough money, there's like candy store. So, um, when you click on the money, it asks you, um, it asks you different questions. So it'll ask you different questions about, um, yeah, so it'll ask you like these true or false questions. True, and it'll raise like the amount of money. And then, um, when you get a question wrong, it'll like subtract that amount of money from the total. Like if you found best, and this would be false, and then you would click on the one dollar bill here. It would be true, but if you were to type in false, you would get...
The false would go.
Yeah, that's true. And then, um, over here is some of my coding that I used. We had to use a lot of coding to do different things.
Can you explain one of the blocks?
Um, like one of, like this block here, um, when you click on one of these coins, um, there was a five dollar bill here, so this goes to that. And, um, it asks you the question, which is displayed here. And then if you get the answer incorrect, it will, or the answer correct, then it'll increase the amount of money that you get in the score here. But if you get it incorrect, it'll decrease that amount of money, and it'll tell you the correct answer. So, the game took a lot of coding and step by step, like trying to figure out the different problems that you like face. And then, probably, the most helpful code in this game, or to me, was the broadcast tool, because, um, by doing the broadcast tool, when one thing happened, it would let other things be affected by it. So, um, for example, when you get onto the next level, um, if you say broadcast next level, um, all the things that you don't need here will disappear, and it will change scenes using the broadcast tool. So I found it pretty helpful. And then, um, it just took a lot of different coding and... You use different, um, characters, um, down here, so I, a lot of different things. So, yeah. We had to do a project on alternative energy, and I did solar power. This, it starts with the instructions, and then when you press the spacebar, it goes to the end. And when you click the signs, you get two points, and if you get the clouds, you reach one point. And then, when you get to, um, once you get to one hundred points, it starts asking you questions, and you get, um, coins for those questions. And the, these are my coatings.
Can you explain to us that first block of code?
Okay, so when the space keys pressed, the suns will show, and it goes to X negative one, twenty-six, and one, negative two, and then it has to change by negative two, um, going down, and it will hide when it gets to the bottom, and then show again at the top, and then keep going down. And then I had all these characters and for the questions. Um, it was kind of difficult because, um, the score wouldn't always get in at the right spot for asking questions, so you had to make a range for the scores. When it was between one hundred and one hundred and three, it would change the background and go to... And I had a lot of difficulty with that because the score changed too fast.
Abby, in that first block, did that thing scroll along like that solar panel, was that movie?
Yeah, you could move, you could move the, um, the arrows to catch the third corner.
Okay, so Scratch is really a prerequisite to do the robotics. It really teaches the students about creating variables, like everything you see in orange here is a variable and control statements. And also, it, I don't know if you picked it up in the block of code she was explaining, the grid is really an X-Y axis plane, so the students have to pick positions on the plane to like be able to place their characters or their sprites where they want to place them. So it teaches them a lot. And then in eighth grade, we bring the students into robotics. So I'd like to call up the eighth grade team, who are going to show you two of their wonderful creations that they worked so hard on, and explain their projects to you.
These are some of our pictures from our, our journal, engineering book, that we had to take to put on one of the websites we made. Here's another one. That's our sign, which is back to sign. Um, the picture of it all plugged into the computer and it getting ready to work. Alright. Hi, my name is Taylor.
I'm Megan.
And I'm Maddie.
And we are in the eighth grade. To start this project, we first learned about mechanisms and how they work. Then we learned about robot seeing and its features. Using our prior knowledge, we had to choose a project that required us to solve a problem and eventually build a working robot. We chose the project Spin Sign. This required us to build a structure that would turn a sign for a business.
Right, so after brainstorming, we sketched our initial design in our engineering notebook. Then we started building the sign. Along the way, we encountered issues and challenges, and we had to make changes in our design, which we, um, wrote in our engineering notebooks. Next, it was time to program. We encountered many challenges programming. After further research and discuss, discussions, we solved all our problems and our robot works. Um, so by putting my hand over the line follower, it represents the light decreasing in the atmosphere outside. Okay, so the way our robot works is that a smaller drive gear is powered by our three-wire motor. This turns a larger driven gear, which holds our sign. Um, to turn the motor, we can, um, the mo- to turn the motor, the owner pushes the button, called a bump switch. The motor will continue to run until it is manually shut off by the button again, or it will turn off automatically by the line follower, which is this. So this is a sensor, and the sensor works by detecting the levels of light and following the command it is supposed to do. We programmed it to shut off the motor when there is a certain amount of light, and so we wanted it to be, so since it's a skiing, snowboarding business, we want it to be just daytime, so when less light, so when it's like... to be just daytime, so when less light, so when it's like dusk, it would shut off so that when it was nighttime, it would stop spinning the sign.
Okay, and next Jack, Michael, and Sean will explain to you another project. They have their choice of 10 projects after they learn a little bit about the mechanisms and about programming, then they could choose one of 10 projects to choose and build by themselves independently in a five-hour to the, to their new project.
Okay. So what we had to do was we had to choose one of 10 robots to build and activate the computers using programs. And so what we did was we chose this, what you're, tank, um, which basically holds an object or anything and will bring it from point A to point B and drop it. And these are made up of switches. Uh, here are pretty much all the switches except for this claw. Uh, there are line followers, limit switch, bump, bump switch, and product meter. So those are pretty much what activate it by plugging into the computer and start it. Here's a demonstration.
One moment.
It's supposed to, you know, drop the little blocks on it instead of just went back.
And also I can vouch for them, it was working.
Yeah, that's great.
Every time I look there taking a new piece off or putting a new piece on, I'm like, don't put any more pieces up!
It's like having hardware left over.
I think you can go on, I mean, that was wonderful!
Here are some pictures of the students working. Um, you know, here's Sean, we're in a program. They worked really, really hard on the programming portion and on building portion. And they actually had, you know, different jobs. They split up their jobs into electrical engineer, mechanical engineer, and programmer, but they also helped each other. So everybody learned all of the different jobs, but they really fell into like the area that they were most passionate about. So our message, when students succeed, we all succeed. For our future.
It's exciting.
I think so.
Thank you very much. A little middle school student, so very impressive. Thank you. Yeah, Kelly?
Has anyone considered taking all this talent and hard work and forming a first robotics team? There are a lot of rewards I'd go for that.
Shion?
We actually have a first robotics team from middle school and the high school, probably for both. So, um, we recently competed with the high school students in the next, or, um, the first tech challenge competitions.
I'd love to hear more about that. What you're doing is great.
There is actually this show on our YouTube channel and Channel 17 also that I've been helping Kito recently done. So check it out, it's really good. And we're always looking for parent volunteers to help build robots.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you all again. Okay, moving on. Seed update, Teresa DeBrito.
Good evening. I'm gonna try real hard, but I'm not gonna come anywhere close to that presentation. See, it's interesting, but I don't think it's gonna be quite that interesting, right? That's about the topic on that. I should've gone first, you're right, you're right. Although you, you got a taste of really what happens in the real world with that particular program that Alex is, she was talking about how long it takes to produce that, that's really what they do in the real world, so that was pretty awesome. What you have in front of you is an overview. I'm going to go over our original Region 12 teacher eval, the four seed, and have you compare a huge change. We talked about change tonight, that was a big theme. Um, we talked about Common Core briefly, there's SBA, well, teacher evaluation is a significant change in education. So if we turn to page one, there is a comparison. The left column indicates the previous Region 12 teacher evaluation requirements and then in the right column, we have the seed requirements. They both did have requirements for, um, year one and two and the original document for Region 12 with non-tenure teachers, two goals and a minimum of two formal observations. So very, very similar there. However, the previous evaluation document for professional status, once a teacher was tenured, there were two goals. There was a goal setting report that included just three questions and then one formal observation. The seed requirements include two goals. The student learning objective form has eight questions, a minimum of one formal and two informal observations, a parent goal, and a teacher focus area. Moving along, you're looking at observations. Our previous evaluation document, the administrator completed the observation report. Under seeds, teachers complete a two-page pre-observation form, a pre-observation conference form, and a post-observation reflection after the observation. All documentation is tagged in a system referred to as Bloom Board that was provided by the state. And the administrators have to provide the evidence in Bloom Board for each of the Common Core teaching domains in the rubric. The end of year summative evaluation. Our former teacher evaluation included, um, teachers completing a progress report, three questions. The administrator completed the performance and competencies checklist and there was an annual summative evaluation form that was completed. Under seeds, the teacher completes a six-item health assessment form. The administrator inputs evidence for the domains on Bloom Board and there is an overall rating based on percentages. And the percentages, there, there is a grid. The student growth is 45 percent, that's based on all the, the teacher goals and student progress. There's a school indicator, 5 percent, the school performance index that you've heard before. And then 40 percent is teacher performance. And that is based on the observations in the teacher focus area. And then 10 percent is parent feedback. So this one page is paints a picture of the difference and I'm gonna take you through the packet so you can actually see the documentation. The next page has the supporting documents of the former evaluation section. I refer to the goal setting report with the three questions, that is what you see next, that is done in the fall. Then, the observation report that administrator would complete is the next document. In the spring, the teacher would write a written progress report, again, three questions based on their goal that they set in the beginning of the year. And then at the end of the year, there was the annual summative evaluation, a write-up there, a narrative, commendations, recommendations, and then the checklist, the competencies checklist that was referred to. So that was our former document, those were the components of it. The next section is titled supporting documents received. So I'll take you through this. There are student learning objectives, two goals. I reference that there were eight questions, you see them on the next page. Then you see the teacher focus area, so they have to respond to another set of questions to complete that form. And then there's the template for the parent goal. So at the beginning of the year, now with seeds, these are the documents that teachers complete. The next section is the documents for observations. I reference the pre-observation plans for classroom teachers. You see it here and it actually gives, um, primary focus of what each area is supposed to include for the teachers to complete. And that is a two-page document. In addition, here's the pre-observation conference protocol, where the teacher responds to an additional six questions. After the administrator goes in and conducts the observation, there is a post-observation reflection form that the, the teacher also completes. Then at the end of the year, the next section is the self-reflection. Teacher completes these six questions and they bring evidence of their goals. I thought it would be important for you to look at the rubric. What goes into the scoring that the state has provided. It is a Common Core teaching rubric for effective teaching. There are six domains, however, domain one is really the preparation program for the teacher to be certified, so there's no data gathering for that particular domain. So it begins with domain two, which has to do with the classroom environment, student engagement, and, um, commitment to learning. And there are four indicators for that domain. And there's coverage there identifying what to look for and how to do the ratings from below standard to exemplary. As you go through, domain three has to do with planning for active learning. And here we see three indicators. And again, the language that is used to determine where a teacher falls based on the evidence that the administrator is gathering. Domain four, specifically about instruction for active learning. Again, three indicators for that particular section. Domain five is assessment for learning. Three indicators for that section. And domain six is professional responsibilities and teacher leadership. And again, in this area, there are four indicators. So the administrators gathering evidence for all of these indicators. So at the end of the year, there is a scoring process, which is the next section titled scoring. I pulled specific pages from our seed document. The first page there is an overview of the percentages. And the next page actually shows a sample. In the center of the page, this is for domain two and it shows all the four indicators and the evaluator's score. And then it matches down to the table underneath. So for domain two, that arrow should just be showing the table, not a particular location. Table two, sorry, domain two, the average score was 2.8. So you see that under domain two. And then there are sample results for domains three, four, five, six. Those have to all be averaged. And then on the next page, you see a complete sample of a summative calculation. I describe that teacher performance is 40 percent of the total. So you see a sample there that if a teacher received a score of two, which is the developing at the table at the top, that's 40 percent, it is weighted, they have 80 points for that one category. Then you see parent feedback, the weight here is 10 percent. If that teacher's result was proficient, they got a score of three, the weight is 10, result was 30 points. So for the section of teacher practice, the teacher's overall score is 110 developing. That's only 50 percent so far. Moving along to student outcomes, we have 45 percent student growth and development. If the teacher's score was a three and a half and the weight is 45 percent, we have 157 and a half points. And then the whole school learning indicator is a school performance index, the SPI that we've talked about in the past, that weighs just 5 percent, so that's an additional 15. So the overall there would be 173, we round. And that would be a proficient category. So the last page matches up the two. The teacher practice was a rating of two and then the student growth a rating of three and then the arrows follow to the overall rating for the teacher would, for this particular example, is proficient. I'll have to digest. So Dr. Cappantino is going to talk about the flexibility option that the state has just put forth recently. And I know there are questions and I'm absolutely happy to answer those.
Um, if you...
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I don't know if the superintendent wants to go before me, but I just came on board here, but on the surface, this sounds, you have to explain to me, it sounds very bureaucratic. How does this all get accomplished and the learning take place? And is this the lady who does all of the, who does all the evaluation and puts all the various things together?
Okay, I'll give you a little summary and then I'll go into my part and then Teresa can add. Um, this was put together, uh, as law, um, to start this past January, uh, July 2013. So, um, there has been, like, the Common Core is under attack and a lot of changes and in transition, this is also. So basically, it started out with this magilla of requirements and it's been warded down a little bit by the governor and the commissioner with a lot of pressure from a lot of different people, the teachers' union, the administrators, just a lot of input because it is such a, um, difficult task to get everything done. The issue, where this came from, is really the tenure law and the issue that, um, teachers who may not be qualified for the classroom, and we really do not have any of those teachers here in Region 12. It's hard to get them to move on, um, based on the past evaluation systems. So this was a way of changing, um, the law where you really just have to be ineffective as a teacher, as opposed to the other issues that were a little more intense.
So you would get tenure after three years?
Yeah, tenure after four years.
Four years. And then basically, you were held good, you couldn't be fired, so to speak.
Well, yeah.
Be difficult, right?
Right.
So this eliminates that concept?
Well, you could be, but it was difficult. So this was a way, this was the way to start to maybe make it a little easier, to move people on. Um, what has happened is, it's really become a bureaucratic nightmare because part of the issue, when you think of a teacher evaluation, it really is a program to improve teaching and learning. Okay? All teachers need to improve in some area. Um, and the idea of a teacher evaluation is for administrator to go into a classroom and give helpful suggestions, tips, best practices, based on the evidence they're collecting in the classrooms. So that's the basis of this. The problem is that it has gotten very out of hand with really losing focus of what we're supposed to be doing and it's become almost a to-do list, oh my gosh, I gotta get into this classroom and this classroom and this classroom. So what has happened is, the, um, commissioner is allowing us to have some flexibility and not follow the original plan, um, to the extent that we originally put it forth that you all agreed to in maybe November. I, I, obviously, I don't know when you agreed to it, it may have been last June. So anyway, so what we're asking is that, um, we knock the goals, uh, down to, um, and this we've discussed with the teachers, okay? So we're all in agreement. So that each teacher, through mutual agreement with his or her evaluator, which are the principals, which are, um, the assistant principal Laurie, okay? Will select one goal and objective with a minimum of two indicators... with a minimum of two indicators of academic growth and development, or each teacher, through mutual agreement with their evaluator, will select two goals with a minimum of an indicator of academic growth and development for each goal. The other piece that we are asking for flexibility on is the amount of observations so that every teacher doesn't have to have too formal, too informal, et cetera. The state is promoting this. You need, we need to make a motion to approve it, but I, but before we do that, I'm probably not explaining everything because it really is large. This is what I will tell you. Our principals are doing an excellent job. I did this for the principals. I do the same thing with different rubrics with the principals. So I've sat down, we have gone over goals, they have SLOs, student learning objectives, they have parent goals, we have looked at assessments, we meet, I observe them, and at the end of the year, I have to evaluate them and give them a rating. That's what the principals are doing with their teachers. What we have to learn to do is streamline the process so that it becomes a meaningful process that improves teach and learning, and it's not, you know, oh, my gosh, I gotta, you know, I didn't, I forgot to get evidence in this area. You know what I'm saying? Because people are very nervous. Teachers are very nervous. They're nervous about being labeled as proficient or developing, et cetera, et cetera, and ending up in the papers or et cetera, F.O.I.L. So that's where we are. I'm sure I didn't answer that properly, but I tried.
Thanks. How many years do you give this before the State Board of Education flushes it? Like, they do so many initiatives that they bring out.
Well, that's what we're seeing now. We're seeing that it's starting to get watered down. And now what we need to do by June 2nd is look at our plan and make changes for next year. So this has really been, I think two weeks ago, I talked about all these initiatives that we're trying to work through. This is one of them that has really been a headache and has caused a lot of stress for the administration and the teaching staff.
All right, Pat, a couple of follow-up questions. One, you don't view the watering down of this that you're requesting the board to do that would in any way disadvantage our teachers?
No.
Or our system, or be bad for us?
No. And I probably should say more flexible as opposed to watering down. That's probably not the correct term.
Well, watering down probably is right, but more flexible. Okay, well, do you have a specific proposal you want to put forward?
Yes, it's right here. It's right here under 5.3, to consider and if appropriate, approve flexibility changes to Region 12 seed evaluation document.
Right, right, but you...
That's all we need.
Do you have those flexible changes? Do you tell us what they are?
I did. We're going, instead of having, each teacher right now has two goals, and each goal...
No, I understood about the goals, but you also said that you were gonna have fewer evaluations.
We're just getting to it.
I didn't get those numbers.
Right. Do you want to talk about what the observations have gone down?
First of all, Peter, to answer your question, this is based on a business model. That's really what this is. It's gathering data, whether, you know, it needs success or doesn't. What we're finding that is most difficult is the amount of paperwork. The amount of tracking that is required is unbelievable. The training was very stressful for the administrators. Each observation to complete all the domains with all the evidence, you're talking hours upon hours. And so the hours that a teacher is spending doing all the paperwork when they really could be spending time planning for lessons, the amount of time that the administrators are in the classroom scripting everything, missing opportunities of kids engaging with each other because they're having to write everything down because the system is such that you have to have factual evidence in Bloom Board. With that said, we're actually happy that the state came forward and offered flexibility options which would allow us to put teachers on a rotation so that not every single teacher is having a formal observation every single year, but every three years. But there will be informal observations every year. They don't have to provide this type of documentation. So an administrator can still go in and obviously still observe the learning and all the different components that are part of the plan. And I, in my role, am the chairperson for the district seed committee, and that's how I fit in, and I support the school, the principals, and do trainings.
And who does the observing?
The administrators in the buildings do, yes.
Two questions. The first one is, how do the parents evaluate? How do you get parent opinion?
School, the whole school survey, which we have done, and then from that, the schools will select a focus area. For example, one that is common could be to improve communication. So looking at the results, there is a goal, and so the schools will say, well, we're gonna commit to making sure that we get back to a parent within a day. They'll set parameters. Or that we reach out to parents when a student isn't, you know, hasn't completed assignment. There are specific indicators that they put together, they measure and gather data on to improve that focus area.
Well, but how does that play into an individual teacher's evaluation?
It's a percentage. It's like the SPI. We are a whole community because a student doesn't just have one teacher, you know, in every single area. So for the younger students, yes, you're right, the majority of the time they're spent with one particular teacher. At the secondary level, they have many different teachers. So we need to be consistent. So as a school, we really do need to look at our response time so that, as a whole, we're rating ourselves on that particular goal. There are other districts that might do it differently. That was the option for Region 12.
Well, I guess I'm misreading this whole thing. You're saying that this is an evaluation of the staff or of individual teachers?
Just the parent goal is a commitment of the staff. The overall rating...
That's 10% of their grade.
That is correct.
And it's weighted.
That's correct. But a teacher will come, but a teacher will come and say, this was the goal that we decide on as a school. And look, this is the log. These are the parents that I've communicated with. They bring evidence indicating that they have supported that bigger goal for the school. So each teacher is responsible for keeping data on their part for that particular goal. Does that make sense?
So they have to seek parental opinion?
The school conducts a survey. That's how it's done.
Anything else, Valerie?
It's a anonymous survey.
I still don't understand it, but also getting into what is required here, just in terms of your format, you presented us with what you used to do, you're presenting us with what you have to do, and then we are going to vote on something in between.
I think what the superintendent is asking for under 5.3, to us to approve flexibility changes to reach a 12-seat evaluation document, and I would add, as managed by the superintendent. So move. Second. All right, is there any quick discussion? Tell us.
I think this is the logical outcome of kind of data-driven assessments we're doing with the students and how it's reached at the teachers. Now, I'm all in favor of more teaching and less paperwork overall. Do I get an amen? If Dr. Cosentino likes this more flexible approach and the state okays it, I have no problem with going with it. Also, I would assume that if the state makes changes and has to find a firm in the future, we'll be totally in.
Can you talk a little bit about long-term subs? Will we be, is there a way to evaluate the, I'll say, the quality, the history of the longer-term subs that come in to teach? Because they're transient. They might be in for three months, and then they move on. The regular teacher is back. You know, the regular teacher is getting the formal evaluation or formal observations every three years, with informal. But what happens with the longer-term subs?
So a substitute is not a part of the certified staff, not a part of the bargaining unit, not a part of the certified staff of the district. So they are just contracted for a specific amount of time. Or they're filling in for a teacher. But there is no formal process for substitutes because they're not held by the same standards as the teachers that we employ, certified staff that we employ.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? On the last, I'm referring to the last page of your document. You've given us some definition.
Yes.
Ineffectiveness is defined. You said post-tenure teachers, I assume a teacher who has tenure, whose rating, and this is ineffectiveness, post-tenure teachers whose rating falls below proficient are considered to be in need of assistance.
Yes.
An assistance plan for the following year is required. A post-tenure teacher shall be deemed ineffective if the teacher receives two sequential overall ratings below proficient. In extreme cases, a pattern may consist of one year's rating. And then a novice teacher, I assume one who does not have tenure, is ineffective if the teacher ratings receives a rating of below standard. My first question is, if the motion is approved, will it affect any of this rating?
Not at all. These are guidelines by the state. That has not changed.
And then I guess my other question is, if a post-tenure teacher is found to be ineffective, what is the remedy for the district? What are the potential remedies?
An action plan. An action plan. We always, in good faith, want to assist.
All right, but if the action plan fails?
Correct. So that's where the new legislation allows for an expedited process for determination.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Barbara.
Just wanted to ask briefly, so basically, the changes are the rotation of the goals.
The rotation of observation.
Observation. But you said there are two goals. Are there...
There are still two identifiable indicators, but they both could be under one student learning objective goal.
Oh, okay.
Whereas before, they were separate.
So they can streamline them a little bit.
So you can still, yes.
My other question, as I said, I think everyone here is for this. This is kind of informational question. What is Bloom Board?
Bloom Board is a software program that the state provided at no cost to districts to input all of the evidence, and it will conduct the ratings.
When you talk about the extensive paperwork, is there a lot of paperwork on top of that? Or does Bloom Board handle...
Well, everything has to be, teachers upload documents into Bloom Board so that their evaluator can also see those documents. So everything that I've shared here is in Bloom Board.
But despite the, you know, the onerous workload involved in this, is the process itself difficult, or is that somewhat...
Very lengthy, very, very lengthy.
Is that aided at all by software in addition to Bloom? Or is it just Word documents or Google documents?
Right, right. We just rely on the rubric and look for evidence for the domains.
Have they given you any indication that as this solidifies, perhaps, that the state might offer other software to make it easier too?
There is other software for purchase.
Right.
So there are districts that have purchased.
You see where I'm driving at here. Is there a way of approving this process for you that we could consider as we're looking at the budget?
You know, software is one little piece of it. It's, the bulk of the work is all the documentation.
Right.
Hands on.
It's a way of speeding up that documentation.
We're gonna look into other software, though. We're working on it.
We'll definitely want, we're open to those options. But the state obviously offered it at no cost, and it was so new to everybody that, you know, we're all learning together.
All right, anything else? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve flexibility changes to Region 12 seed evaluation document as managed by the superintendent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, thank you, and good luck. Thank you for all your hard work, all of you. Okay, moving on to item six, Ole Miss, second reading of policy 5131.6, alcohol use, drugs, and tobacco.
Michelle's led here. I'm just gonna run through this. There have, we had no changes since the first reading. And as you recall, these, if you want to take a look at them, they are on your home books in black and red and white. The red language highlighted is the additional language. And basically, as you may remember from our first reading, what we added were not only referrals to e-cigarettes, but also language regarding expanded terms for drugs and controlled substances, and interestingly enough, language involving drug facsimiles, which means the intent is there even if the actual content is illegal. In other words, if there's a student who, for some reason, is managing to convince someone to buy oregano from them, that's still considered illegal even if it's not an actual drug. That's the main gist of the changes, denoting the illegal activities and the definitions on this 5131.6.
All right, it was approved for a first reading. There's been no changes. Is there a motion approved for a second reading?
Some of.
All right, it's removed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Emily. All right, any discussion? Greg?
Yeah, I think so. I have serious doubts about this policy related to drugs that are facsimile drugs that aren't drugs. I don't see how you can do anything if somebody is selling an oregano. I don't see how you can do anything if someone is selling paper. At what point do you draw, do you draw the line? I think this is, this borders on the silly, and I understand why you would want to do this, but pretty soon, you will just conclude that we will just start arresting people when they walk through the door, just on fear, on the theory that we might as well. Because this kind of a thing, this is taking it far beyond too far. The other question I have is whether or not they define e-cigarettes as here. I don't see a definition in this policy for e-cigarettes. And the reason I ask about that is you realize that these things will very soon no longer look like cigarettes. In fact, right now, you can buy them that look like rings on your finger, and you can literally stick your mouth to the ring, inhale the nicotine, and there's no vapor at all. So I'm telling you, you're not gonna be, this is gonna be out of your control to manage. It's silly, and I frankly think we ought to shelve this policy and rethink it with some serious thought given to what really matters and what doesn't matter. And I think a lot of things in here don't matter, and if we've got the resource officer chasing people down the hall after oregano sales, that's where my head's gonna explode, and I think that's a complete waste of the school's resources to do stuff like that.
Susan?
I think the spirit of the facsimile drugs is that that could be indicative of a problem behavior in a student who needs someone to step in. The punishment would be up to the superintendent, right? Up to the discretion of the superintendent?
Certainly, the principal first, and then it would come to my role.
Basically, so I'm good with that. I think there's, I think, I think the spirit of it is to curtail problem behavior that could be masking something else. E-cigarettes is also a term that is becoming more familiar. When you say e-cigarettes, people understand what it is that you are talking about. So the idea with banning smoking altogether, including e-cigarettes, is to curb the behavior and to set an example. So they're best shot.
Valerie?
I have no problem with approving this as a policy of the board. If we have to make some adjustments in the future, obviously, as our culture changes, we will. We do know that there are facsimile drugs that are not oregano that are very dangerous, and it is a behavior. And by the way, there was an article, I believe it was in Today's Times, or maybe Yesterday, Sunday's, about the liquid that people use to put in their e-cigarettes is as poisonous as you can imagine. So however you want to define an e-cigarette, it's a delivery system in general, and I love living with the general right now. So we should approve this.
Anything else? Chris?
Peter? Does the board's attorney ever review board policies at the request of the board?
Sure, at the request of the board, but for the most part, these policies come from CAPE, and are, they have a staff attorney who reviews them.
So how are we in a lot, with all of this language here, is supposedly that in contrast with...
It's aligned with CAPE's recommendation. Yeah.
Valerie, do you want to speak?
Yeah, I think you've asked similar questions before. It's a team of attorneys at CAPE that do this on a kind of an aggregate level for any of the CAPE subscribers, and our school system is one of them, which enables us to have these policies that adhere to state board and state statutes without our having to pay our own attorney to do it for us. What happens, though, is when we have either in committee or when we bring it to board, we have changes to the, to the language. Sometimes we either go back to CAPE with it, or sometimes we go back to our attorney to review what are usually, you know, very small changes, but which could have repercussions, obviously. Sometimes when it's grammar, when we're including things, when we're taking things out, and we haven't established that there's a great deal of concern that we're making a change that needs to, we need to pay an attorney to review, we don't bother. But for the most part, we save it in the front end because it's an aggregate legal service, and then we only use the attorneys to review real, you know, groundbreaking changes we might make.
Greg, did you have?
Well, yeah, I did. I think my concern about it is, is that when you define things, and when you overdefine them, and when you take behavior that's otherwise legal and track it into these things, which you're really doing for us, I don't think CAPE's doing this a service. I think what they're doing is they're creating a full employment bill for lawyers. Because if you suspend a kid for being in possession of oregano, I can almost guarantee you some lawyer is going to take you to court on that on the grounds that it's, you know, that it's behavior. First of all, if you're serving oregano in the kitchen, if a kid walks down the hall with it and attempts to sell it to someone because you're concerned about drug kind of behavior, I suppose you might have an argument, but I'm not sure you're going to get very far, and I think it's going to be a full employment bill for lawyers, and I think they've gone over the top on that, on those kinds of concepts. And I think with respect to the e-cigarettes, the other question, I guess, is this, the way this is defined, this means that if you've got a child in the school, you're going to have to, I'm not sure if this policy, I haven't read it carefully enough to know how it deals with the drug policy for prescription drugs. If you have a kid in the school that's wearing a nicotine patch, that's a nicotine delivery device that falls under this policy. And are you going to make exceptions for people who have that prescribed for them because they're trying to kick a habit? I don't know if we're doing more harm than good with these policies when we go to the extent that CAPE has gone in this thing to try to define everything. That's all I'm saying.
Valerie?
Well, we can count angels on the head of a pin all day long, and some professions like to do it, but obviously, our main thing here is to protect our students. And the good news about this policy, if it goes, is approved as a second reading, is that I originally ran on the Board of Ed 512 years ago, because I could not believe this school was tolerating a smoking palette. And we kept tolerating it and allowing it, and everyone was all up in arms that we're, you know, it was the most, to me, backward notion. And I often thought that if and when we banned smoking on school grounds, not just buildings, grounds, no smoking palette, I'd resign. Happy. I'm not going to resign tonight, but, you know.
That's why we passed the policy.
Yeah. Amen.
That was our incentive. That was our incentive. You're taking it away.
Enough. We are doing right.
She's still here. The guy I'm smoking.
All right, I'm going to throw my objection.
All right, thank you.
I knew that we'd get you.
Isn't this basically a guideline for the board to implement a policy that gives staff members, principals, and the superintendent some leeway and discretion in making decisions regarding what they feel may be harmful to have on the school system? An innocent set of concrete, I would presume.
The administration has some flexibility. Has flexibility. Principal Gallo, did you want to be heard on this?
Sure. I think I want to point out some excellent points have been made, but I think I want to point out to kind of help everybody to get a handle on this is, first of all, like Valerie said, there are synthetic drugs that are very dangerous for students, and a student who was passing oregano off as marijuana should face a consequence. Is it the same as someone, you know, peeling cocaine under their trunk? Of course not. There is discretion, there is flexibility, and frankly, you have an experienced principal running the building, and an experienced principal as your superintendent. So the check and balance is there. If I was going rogue on Dr. Cosentino, she would let me know to knock it off, and she'd be, that would be the absolute way that we do business. So within any of these violations, there's a certain point where you say, this is disrupting the educational environment. We don't catch everyone that breaks the rules, as in the e-cigarette argument, but if that student is behaving in such a way that it brings attention, and we find out that they're doing something that's not right to do in school, then we punish them. So I guess what I want to say is, please don't take this as something that is written in stone. I don't go off a menu, and if I were asked to go off a menu, frankly, it would be my last day, because there are different situations in almost everything that we do. So I hope that that eases your mind. I respect your right to disagree, but I think that some of these scenarios that you're concerned about just aren't going to happen, and I hope that eases your mind about this.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Kelly?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Greg, and I think this policy is, at the same time, both too vague and too specific. I think it needs a little more work. I would not be surprised to see CAPE come down with a new version. I don't think it's the right order for us right now.
All right, anyone else? All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve 5131.6, alcohol use, drugs, and tobacco as a second reading, as policy of the board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? One? Any others? Any abstained?
We have another policy, too.
One abstention. All right, the motion passes. Next item.
6.2.
6.2, second reading of policy 5141.21, administering medications. Alan?
Similarly, we've seen this one already, and he's very qualms about both of these. These are two particular policies that are reviewed and renewed and revised very often. In fact, if you look at the bottom of this particular one, administering medications, we have policy adopted May 98, revised November 01, revised June 03, revised August 03, revised June 04, revised July 05, July 07, July 09, August 09, April 11, and April 12, and now here we are again, March 14. So some of these, the policy revision wasn't on the alcohol and drugs and tobacco. It is on this one. These are ones where, as Greg and Kelly rightfully pointed out, are constantly evolving due to the nature of our society, and CAPE and the government try to keep up with it. But sometimes our flawed policies are the best we can do in the interim to make sure things don't slip through our fingers in the meantime, which is, you know, the best we can do really to try to help our administration safeguard our children. This policy, administering medications, you may recall, we saw this one last time having to do with EpiPens. This time has to do with the red language in here, which we did see already in the first reading, has to do with the selecting an employee who is trained and who is, knows they have the responsibility to give glucagon injections with, to students with diabetes if necessary. So as you can see, there are incremental changes to these, having to do with different issues that come up, and now that we have to deal with having appoint people who are trained and ready to deal with diabetes injections, whereas last time we had EpiPens, and sometimes we have, you know, adrenaline for athletes. It's always something, and in this case, just a small adjustment for this one particular medication.
Greg?
Move the adoption.
All right, it's removed in second. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting 5141.21, administering medications for second reading as policy of the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. Now, moving on to item seven, new business, 701, to consider an appropriate adjusted tuition rate for out-of-district students, including Sherman. Dr. Cosentino, Mr. Peterson?
Last time you asked to bring forth what we were doing currently, it was brought forth, and it's now your pleasure whether you want to adjust what you charge non-resident students. Currently, it's 90% based on the formula. In the case of Sherman, that's a little more complicated, because you have a contract in place that extends out to the end of the next school year, and it's, that one is 75% of the number that is audited in the state strategic school profile for high school students. So there's a formulation embedded in the Sherman contract specifically addressing it at 75%. If you want to change that one, you would have to obviously amend the contract. Contract only has one more year to run anyway, and Sherman's population is going in the same direction we are, so there's not an abundance of students that we're going to change with the change in this, because the parents there have choice, and they can choose whatever school they wish to send their kids with. I believe it's either three or four options. It's not like we have exclusivity to bring them in.
All right, so the current, for other insurance duties?
Is 90%.
90% of what?
It's the calculation that, let me just pull it back again, I brought it to you last time. We take the audited results from the, it's called an EO1 report. It's split between elementary and secondary, and from that, we're taking out the transportation because we don't supply that to any of the students at all, and it includes no special education costs in it. And at that point, we use a factor of 90% after removing those costs to get back to the regular education. A student has special needs associated with them, they're billed in addition to, based on their IUP.
Okay. Peter?
What is the number?
The number for...
What's the dollar of that?
For this particular school year, it is a tuition rate of $17,896 for a K8 student, and $15,303 for a secondary or 9 to 12 student. That's 90% of the gross number.
Well, those are both 90s? Those are both the 90s?
Absolutely. It's been done this way for...
No, I'm sorry, Bob. Can you tell, sound for those numbers again? The K8 is what?
17,896 is what we would charge.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
And 15,303, if they're on the extreme right-hand side, if you have it from last time.
Do I still have the floor?
Yes, Peter.
I know, I thought, well, my opinion on this is that, I know it's very tempting to lower tuition rates to try and attract students, but on the other hand, what bothers me is that three, these three towns, particularly Roxbury and Bridgewater, have never made any attempt to accommodate the concept of changing their zoning laws in order to encourage the building of affordable houses, whether it be market rate or not. And for us to charge our taxpayers one price and try to fill holes in classrooms by possibly reducing the rate lower than this, I'm fine with accepting the current rate. I think, and Alan had mentioned a while back of a figure, I think of $50,000, if I remember correctly, in a previous meeting.
Close to there, yeah.
And I know some board members have different figures in their mind, but there has been no effort. Washington has made some attempt at affordable housing as far as apartment goes, but there has been no change in these three town zoning laws, which are the largest reason why there is no affordable housing. The average prices of houses in these three towns is in excess of $400,000 to $500,000. And in no way have any of the towns made really any effort. The town zone parcels a land to a quarter acre, half an acre, a third acre, to encourage builders to produce homes that would encourage young families to move into a town. And there are other reasons why the towns are growing with young families, but I personally, at the moment, don't feel that if board members have different numbers in mind than these, that we should make any attempt to accommodate them without the towns accommodating this board of education.
Greg?
I was just going to say, in defense of Roxbury, they're actually engaged in a smart growth effort right now, making efforts to try to figure it out, but it's not as easy as you think, Pete, because you can't build quarter acre lots when you have septic systems and wells, because you can't fit a house, the well, and the septic system and have it with the right separation distances from the lots of buddy. Because it's not just, you know, you don't have that separation just from your septic system, it's got to be from the one on the next lot. And so it becomes a real challenge with those small lots to do that, and that's part of the problem. This is a wide-ranging problem. I agree with you that we've got to do something to try to do it, but it's a bigger problem than just adjusting zoning laws. You actually need to have amenities, and you need to do things that cause people to come here. And I think that, I think that it's a very difficult problem, but I think as far as the numbers, I could see, I don't know that it matters very greatly what these numbers are, but I think at some point in time, if the numbers get pretty low, you might attract some people, and you might also attract some unhappiness of people here who are paying the full freight and then some to accommodate people from other towns. So I think that's a potential for some dissension, right?
Alan?
I feel that, I mean, it's a good points that Greg was making. I think, speaking, just if people are curious, in Bridgewater, it's not only a matter of the lot size as far as the water and septic that Greg's talking about, but the water itself, even if you were able to have a communal well and septic system for small lot buildings, even that wouldn't guarantee you could provide enough water. In other words, if you had a lot system, so you had a lot of buildings on a series of small lots that served with communal water to make up the space, we've found that there just isn't the water for that in Bridgewater, and we're held by these things. But that's just to put Pete's questions to rest. What I, my concern is not so much the price that I would personally want to try a pilot program to reduce our tuitioning in for, because I feel that there are, there are people who would relish the chance to send their kids to our school system in neighboring towns. My only concern is dealing with the one year left with Sherman, because I feel that the difference between lowering our tuition rate and what people in our towns might bristle at the concept of paying the full footage for is different, because we don't really pay, we pay, we don't really pay per child from our taxes to educate our own children here. We pay our property taxes, whatever they may be, and our children are educated from the budget. So if we have a huge house and eight kids in it, we pay our taxes on that huge house. If we have a tiny house and eight kids in it, we pay a tiny amount for our eight kids to be educated. So if someone were to come in and spend less than the per pupil cost to educate their one, two, three, five, six, eight kids, that is still an entirely different number than what our taxpayers are paying for their own children. So I don't think that if you think of it in terms of the per pupil cost and the per family cost per pupil, it's a totally different number. And remember, when you add these neighboring kids in, we're not expecting that this is going to bring in 200 new kids, but whatever it is, brings down our per pupil cost for our taxpayers. Not, obviously, in terms of the budget, because mine doesn't go to the school system, it does go to the towns, but still. So once again, where we left off last time was the concern that we're going to have a problem with that Sherman contract, because what I proposed, would like to propose again, was a number below that Sherman contract. Now, do we need to, in our motion or whatever we do in a motion, leave flexibility for an amendment to that contract so that for the next year, Sherman gets a break? Or do we treat that as an institutional arrangement that doesn't fall into the same circumstances and therefore won't raise their hackles if all of a sudden we're allowing other private individuals to tuition in for a lesser amount? That would be the question. So I'm going to make the motion again, but if we have issues on how to deal with Sherman, I'll be happy to friendly amend my motion. I would like to make a motion to, for the next five years, we do these things just as we do with the transportation, so that we can guarantee parents that we're not going to be pulling the rug out from them next year, for a five-year pilot program of offering a tuition in amount of 60% as opposed to 90% for both of those grade sections.
So that's starting with the 2014-15 school year?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. Susan?
I would like to see some flexibility in the tuition program, perhaps something that instead of a per pupil cost, one amount, and if there is a sibling, perhaps something that is just above what the materials would be. I mean, there has to be something to attract families, whatever that would be. I'd like to see a little more flexibility in encouraging multiple students, because even 60% sounds a little arbitrary, and kids, you know, families do tend to have more than one. And when you get that kind of a big price tag, that might inhibit people considering bringing their kids to this, to the school system. So if the 17, almost 18 is K8, 15 is the 90% or 90% for the 9 to 12, so 60% would be, if we do a little math, I mean, I still think whatever it is, I think it's too high. I don't know that it's, say it again?
About 13 to 1.
I think that's still too high and non-competitive and not flexible enough. You know, we have to be realistic. The reality is, families consider whether or not to move their kids to a different school system, and I'd like to see a little flexibility in our tuitioning program.
Valerie?
Well, I appreciate the work Bob has done on this, and the fact that we've all
Well, I appreciate the work Bob has done on this, and the fact that we've all expressed some interest in increasing our population here. I would like to table the motion, because first off, we are in a contract with a school system right now. I don't think we know what our town fathers, who will really be bearing the brunt of this, because the expenses here, towns support this budget, but the, the income does flow to the towns. I think we need the in, the input from the towns as to whether this should be a good policy or not. I think we're in the middle of a lot of stuff right now. The impact of maybe opening our doors more has to be more fleshed out. Once again, overall, it's the, the actual contract we have in place for another year, and whether this should be a broader policy, which I think it should be, I think it should be totally uniform. But we should be able to go into it with eyes open to the implications. Right now is way complicated, and I would love to see this conversation as we get closer to the renewal or the renegotiation of the Sherman contract, not now.
Did you make a motion?
To table.
Point of order.
Yes.
I, I think we discussed this one time before, and Mr. Brown made a very good and salient point when I made a motion to table, and he was correct, that it's not proper to table a motion to get rid of it beyond some very short period of time during the meeting. I think what she, what she wants to move for is, I forget exactly the name of the motion, but I think it's to...
Suspend.
No, it's, it's to, uh, it's to, it's to send...
I think, I think the motion to table means that if it passes, it has to be brought back up on the agenda by the next meeting.
No, I think it's even shorter than that. I could be wrong. I looked it up after Alan raised it.
It can't be till the end of this.
Unfortunately, I didn't bring Roberts, and I can't find my sheet. But there's another motion on there, it's to, it's to, it's a motion to, oh, I can't, I just can't remember the name, but I don't know if anyone has one of those.
All right, well, hold, there's been a motion made for whatever, we'll have to determine what its length is. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. We moved and seconded it. Now I don't know, I was under Roberts, whether this is discussable.
We can Google this.
All right.
If it's a table until end of, of meeting in the short term, then it's up to the superintendent to discuss, to tell us when we can actually flesh this out. What are the details? When is the actual renegotiation for Sherman starting? Then we can decide.
All right, there's a motion to table that's out.
No, there's no motion, because it's...
It was made and seconded.
But no one knows, even know the name of the motion, so we can't...
She made a motion to table.
Point of order, I can't, but it's not that, we know that one, called that, is not a legal motion, so until we come up with a name for it.
Almost false, Ken, Alan.
Point of order. If, if we can't come up with the name of the motion we're making, then point of order is we suspend everything.
I draw my, my motion to table.
Here's your, here's one motion you can make, is a motion to postpone it to a certain time.
We, that was what happened, which is why we're talking about it now as opposed to two weeks ago when I brought it up the first time. If we keep indefinitely postponing this, this is gonna be even more nonsensical than it always has been. We bring this up every couple of years, and then we get nervous and we postpone it, and we're doing it again.
Can I reword my motion?
How about we just deal with the situation?
I move to postpone the motion, this motion until we are able to think about the renegotiation with Sherman.
Second.
Until we're able to think about the renegotiation.
Plan, plan our renegotiation with Sherman.
All right, that's been moved and seconded, to postpone this motion.
Can I have the actual wording for this motion, please?
I'm sorry?
Can I have the wording for this motion, please?
It's a motion to postpone consideration of Alan's motion.
Until we are about, we, until we can plan our, our renegotiation on the Sherman contract. How's that look? Open.
You got it?
Thank you.
So discussion on that motion. I'm sorry, Susan.
We can't afford to wait that long. We need to be a little more stumpy in our, in our approach to what we're doing in this region. We can't be so stodgy as to like put something as important as tuition amount for our students away and, and, and out one year. This is, this is, I look at this as it could be a bit of a process to roll up our sleeves and to figure out what is gonna be best, what is input from the towns, it's, what is, what's, what's palatable, and compare it against what is going on in our neighboring towns and other towns like us. We wanna be competitive, we wanna be fair, but we also want to attract. And that is something that needs to be highlighted and, and gone over. I don't know that sixty percent, a flat rate of sixty percent is gonna do that. I, you mentioned I'd like a little more flexibility to encourage more than one student coming from a family, I think that is reality, but postponing for a year is, is wasteful and neglectful.
Jennifer?
I, I'm in favor of discussing lowering the tuition, and I, you know, I know it was discussed at the last meeting and was brought to us, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we also were gonna ask what our selectmen thought in each town, and again, I agree that we are looking, we're in a dire situation, but I'm also feeling like we can't just jump the gun and make a decision without really informing, having all the information. I don't feel comfortable, I don't wanna just pick a number and say, nah, sixty percent sounds good. I feel like we need to be really thoughtful about what we're gonna be presenting, talk to our selectmen in our towns and make sure everybody's on board, so when we do pick a number, we really have all the information. This is the second, I mean, I know that you, Alan just said that this comes up every couple of years, this is the second time we've talked about it, and we didn't really talk about it at length the last time we were here, so I'd like a little bit more information before I decide to vote on anything.
Alan?
Um, we had two weeks. I checked with my boss, and Bridgewater is very happy to do this, you could've checked with your selectmen. I don't know why we keep postponing this for more information and not spending any time in the postponement period gathering any information. So I think that's kind of a, a false way of avoiding the subject to say, well, we haven't had a chance to talk about it, because then we give you a chance to talk about it, we don't talk about it. So we could talk about it now, and we could really hammer something out, or we could find another reason to postpone it based on not having done anything since the last time we postponed it, which is now fourteen days ago. So I really feel that, that despite anybody's qualms, this is not going, as I said, this is not going to hurt anyone, it's only gonna be helpful. Perhaps if we feel that sixty percent isn't low enough to have a flood of people, then we could make it lower. As I said, my only concern is Sherman. If we have flexibility to deal with Sherman, to offer them at this point a reduction or not, that would be great. But I don't understand why, when this subject comes up, it is always, why it's so scary that we can't even talk about it? And when we do talk about it, all we can do is talk about postponing it.
That's scary.
Rick?
Well, I, I guess the question I have is, is what, what are we, who are we trying to attract? Are we trying to have other municipalities send their students here because you're bringing the number down low enough that's attractive to them? Or are we trying to get individuals to send their kids here and to tuition them in? And it seems like we're trying to do both. So let me ask this question, how many inquiries, Pat, do we have from people, from individual people and from other municipalities as to what our tuition rate is, and do we accept tuition students?
Very, very little. You will get some in the special education realm. If you have a certain program or you have a certain area of expertise, there may be one school that sends a child here or vice versa. So that will happen. The, we do have every once in a while, a family who is thinking about moving here, so they're, you know, they're going to buy a house, they're looking, their child, you know, it's like September, they don't wanna move the child in the middle of the school year, so you'll get someone in there. The issue of tuition, you're not going after schools to send children, you're looking for families who are enrolled, I assume, in other districts, who will send their children here. And that is a cost to the families, the families have to pay that cost. The only, my only concern is that, as, I have a couple of concerns, but as Bob has said regarding, if someone has an IEP, that person, that family would have to pay the additional cost. But if someone just had, needed help with math or reading, or needed counseling, or had some behavior problems, that really is not an IEP, but will have an impact in your school, that's going to cost us, not the families. So I just think, and it's the other thing that I just wanna mention, it, it, research shows that ninety-five percent of elementary school parents love their elementary school. They love their elementary school, it doesn't matter what their scores are, it doesn't matter, but they just love their elementary school. They have that good feeling, they like the teachers, they like what's going on. They like to have their kids with, you know, siblings and neighbors, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of times, when you do get inquiries from outside, it's for families who may be not as satisfied with their elementary school or a situation going on, and that usually has some background information. So we rarely get someone, since I've been here, no one has come and said, what is the cost? Zero.
So, so are you, are you meaning to suggest that you might be, by doing this, you might actually be encouraging people that are having problems in their district to come here, and then we might find that the problems don't end?
Well, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna use the word that they're having problems, I'm just saying, for some reason, they're not happy where they are.
Okay, let, let me, let me remove the word problem, let's say, you, you have unhappy people who would come here, and what you're suggesting is perhaps they would be no happier here.
Could be.
But now they're paying for the privilege of being here.
It could be.
And being unhappy, as opposed to not paying for the privilege of being here.
I, I, I'm just telling you that there are very few students who, you know, I'll give you a perfect example, just at the high school level, you know, we have students who are at the gunnery, and there's some kind of issue usually, or some kind of situation, and so they don't go to the gunnery anymore and they come to Shippag, they live in our area. But they're paying there, but, you know, some things, they're not happy there. So usually people change schools when they're not happy, and that can encompass many, many reasons why. I don't wanna, you know, be negative about people or say anything, I'm just saying to you.
Just to set the record straight, you're not suggesting that there's an issue with the gunnery?
No, I'm not suggesting that at all.
You're just using that. You're just pulling that out as an example of another school.
I'm just pulling that out, we have the same as other schools.
Near boss.
Hypothetically speaking, thank you.
Jennifer?
Um, I just wanted to say that I'm not afraid to have the conversation, I actually am very, I think it's a great idea, just think again. And I'm glad that your boss is on board with it, but I'd like to be able to have all three selectmen here and just hear what all three of them have to say, so I can hear it too. It would make me feel better moving forward when we're picking a number, how all three town selectmen feel, so that I'm more comfortable making a decision. That's it.
Alan?
I agree completely, and I'm enthusiastic about the idea. I really would love this to be a program. Let's go out there, let's all decide to do this, whoops, and, but make it a program in which we, we have brochures, we have contracts that have been vetted, that we go out and solicit. Some people, when we were on the long-range planning, because this came up, and I'm, I was a hundred percent for it, said, oh, we can't poach from our neighboring districts. Well, too bad. I think that if we make it attractive, and it's a real program for everybody, and there's one cost, and that we've all thought it through, and the towns know that that income stream might be diminished, or because of volume might be increased, right? But this, I think we have to, to approach this as a big change in what we do, which I think is gonna be great and wonderful for the region, but shouldn't just be backed into in a haphazard way. And I, maybe I'm missing something, but I know that there, of course, was a handout from the previous business meeting, I don't have anything in front of me. Does everyone have that sheet? Because I like to see things in front of me, and I don't have that, and I can make an informed decision with that.
Kelly?
With respect to the superintendent who mentioned some of the ways that people do move school districts, I think we also need to emphasize that we have some really great schools here, and the quality of our schools, I think is what most of us expect will attract additional students from surrounding areas. And they might come from not just our, the towns that are contiguous with us, but, but potentially from thirty minutes away or so.
Right, yeah.
So, I, I think that there's a real potential there. I don't know how this is gonna affect a, a change like this if we keep kicking it down the road. I don't wanna get an outside consultant and some kind of committee. I'd like to know what the procedures would be if we don't simply make this kind of vote. Also don't see that we're gonna have an influx of alarming numbers of children. This is a pilot program, I expect we might pick up a couple of kids the first year, those kids would be grandfathered for five years. I don't think that's too much of a risk to take, two or three kids that are coming into this district maybe next year. See how it goes. Then you can revisit how that lower tuition and the, the program worked. It's not, you're, you're not doing this for perpetuity, this board can change its mind. Only a couple of kids will be grandfathered, guaranteed those, those five-year rates, or the five-year residency. So I don't think it's a big risk that we're taking. It's something to try, we have to collect the numbers, we're not Texas, we're not gonna be Texas, we either think out of the box, because Texas is building high schools and community colleges and elementary schools faster than, than, I don't know, Superman can build them. It's different here, and we're not gonna be Texas, this is Connecticut, the numbers are simply diminishing. People are moving out, people aren't having as many kids, it's a very expensive place to live, houses are big, properties are big, but we have fewer kids in each of the houses in this area. So if we don't get creative and, and find some solutions to the demographic problem, I think this is a good, fair solution to try. I mean, we're gonna end up with these dwindling numbers continuing on with no, no letter.
If I might, I agree completely, it's just that, for instance, Susan brought up a great idea, if you have families coming, how do you get that second, third, or fourth child a discount?
We vote again.
We just, we just need to get a program together, and we just can't do that tonight. And I think it's, I would love to have this say, let's pick a time, us, for the agenda...
Two weeks from now.
Well, again, we have the budget vote, I mean, it's up to, you know, if, let's clear the boards and, and, and talk about how we wanna do this, how we market it, if there's a family discount, what the legalities are in terms of actual contract, that people don't come here with children who might need more services and suddenly find out that's not gonna happen. Just get the whole program organized, I'm all for that. If you wanna call it the first business meeting in June, and then we get our townspeople here. The only reason why we shouldn't do it in May is we've got a budget vote, I don't know.
Peter?
Yeah, I mean, the board's beating around the issue. This is a housing issue. I lived at Quarry Ridge for ten years, and Alan's retort before and Greg's is, is just false. We had fourteen units with thirty-five, we had fourteen buildings with thirty-five units in those fourteen buildings. We had our own well, we had no problem drilling well, supplying water for all of these buildings. This concept that there's all sorts of problems in the towns are putting up affordable housing. There is no problem. The problem is the town fathers and the citizens wanna have three acre and four acre zoning, exclusionary zoning. Unless you change your zoning laws, you're not gonna have any children in this system because of the, the price of a parcel of land. So if the board wants to do something, what the board should do is write a letter to its select, asking them to come up with a plan that includes growth of children and families in their towns. This concept, you can drop the price to nothing, you can plug enough, two hundred kids in the school system for a dollar a day. I mean, these numbers are, you know, they don't mean anything. You can plug kids in because you've got a class of ten kids, you can plug two or three more kids in for nothing, basically. So coming up with a hypothetical number is a game, that's all it is. And you're not bringing in enough revenue. You're gonna get five kids, two kids, you need to get fifty kids, like we had from Sherman. We're not getting them anymore. We need that kind of volume. Give me a proposal for bringing a voluminous number of kids into this system, then I'll cut, then I'll cut a deal for fifteen thousand or thirteen thousand, but two, three, four, five kids, it's not an answer to what the problem really is. The board should be addressing what the problem is, not dancing around all of these.
All right, Rick?
I just, I just have to, I mean, I have to rise in, in defense of Mr. Brown, because Bridgewater suffers from the situation.
because Bridgewater suffers from the situation, which think about more wells that are at depths of a thousand feet of water, because they have a terrible time drawing water out of Bridgewater. Roxbury has the same problem in the downtown part of Roxbury, around where the school is, the wells are very poor. And you can't just make a generalized statement that because somebody found a piece of water that's, that's got, a piece of property, it's got plenty of water, and it's got good ground for septic. Most of the lots that are left in Roxbury are not good lots. They have a lot of wet ones, they have issues with water, and, and wells and other things. And it's very easy to say that, but it's a little bit harder to do. Yet, could we make smaller lots, you bet? But, uh, it's got to be done properly, or we will not, or we'll have issues. And all I'm saying is that Roxbury's looking at it, and they're trying, but it's not as easy as you have to believe in. And I will tell you, Bridgewater's got problems doing that.
All right. We're getting off the subject, quite frankly, of the motion. We're getting, speaking for myself, I don't have a problem looking at this, uh, and considering it. It may be a good idea. I, sixty percent seems to me to be arbitrary. I would like the input of the town fathers. I'm sorry that Alan, you talked to your boss, and nobody's talked to their boss. But we don't, the fact is, we haven't done it. And I would ask, if the motion passes, I'm not talking about putting it off indefinitely, perhaps something could be done for the beginning of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. I don't know that we have to, I'm uncomfortable voting on this without having the input of, at least the input of the first selectman of the towns, and perhaps the boards of finance. And I would ask, if the motion is passed, well, I could ask, we could have the superintendent plan meetings that the board could attend. I don't think we could do it at a board meeting, but a meeting with the selectmen, and get their input, and as Valerie says, come up with some sort of plan. Instead of, Alan throws out sixty percent, Susan thinks the number is not quite right. I don't know what the number is, and perhaps there is something that can be done. As Jennifer said, it sounds like something that we can explore, but I'm not prepared to vote for Alan's motion tonight. So, I will vote in favor of Valerie's. Alan?
I'm, I'm glad that we're, you know, churning on this, because, um, you know, without, I don't, I don't think we need a program. Basically, the program is the Chappag education and the elementary schools' education, and that's what they're coming for. It's just a price on what people are already, some people are already doing. And, and I also realize that this is not the, the, the be-all and the end-all. This is not going to solve all of our problems. But it's kind of like, you know, trying to save money, you want to save heat, you know, close the window, or, or, you know, put some webbing around your door in the wintertime. It's not as if you're going to have no heating bill, but you're going to save a little bit here. And that's the point. We realize we have bigger fish to fry. We have longer-term issues that we're dealing with currently, and will be dealing with in the future. But this is, to me, something that when you have a, when you have a reputation for a public school system that can offer a pseudo-private school education, there would be people in neighboring towns who would want in on that, when we can offer a price lower than a private school equivalent. In the same way, there are people in this town who may feel that a, a larger school system like Brookfield's or New Milford might be better because of the large number of more kids, and more opportunities, and more sports teams, and all that. So, there's, there's a give and take. I know offhand, there are people in New Milford who would like a, a smaller, uh, uh, high school system, for instance, for their kids. Might be willing to pay for it. Might be more likely to actually send their kids here if it's less. So, I realize that it's arbitrary to make a decision now, but I, for one, don't know how to get movement on this, otherwise, than just putting it out there. So, I would suggest that if we could, if we're going to postpone this, let's postpone this for another two weeks, and then, at that meeting, ask our selectmen to come, so we can have, we can ask those questions.
Right.
Or the boards of finance. You know, and you know how it is around here. If we, part of the reason why I put these motions out to say sixty percent is, is, you know, until something appears to be almost real, nobody cares about it. If we, if we start sending noises out there that we're actually going to reduce the tuition by sixty percent, or down to forty percent, or seventy percent with a, a group rate for families of three or more, whatever it is, as soon as that starts to get some traction in the press, if someone's concerned about it, you're going to hear about it. So, I'm just saying, make this a real effort, so that we can not only do it for this upcoming year, but do it in time for people to make their decisions about this upcoming year. And let's postpone it again for another two weeks, but let's not just postpone it again for me to bring it up and have you all, you all go, "Oh, it's too scary". Let's postpone it so the next time, we have all of our questions answered.
We're all missed you on this.
Good, so let's make it happen next, in two weeks.
Well, I, I, speaking for myself, I think two weeks is too fast. I don't have a problem.
That's what I mean.
Well, it is. There's some, there's a lot of people doing a lot of things, and there's information that has to be gathered. I would suggest a meeting in May, after, one of the two meetings in May, after the budget is voted on, which is normally early May, eight, eight-five, May sixth, something like that.
May fifth.
So, we'd have one of the two meetings in May. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I'm going to move the question very soon, if we don't go on here.
All right, Susan.
I think the sooner the better. I think we do need to move on, on getting information. I think May is too late. We need to, whatever we're going to be doing, we need to have this solidified and done before the end of the school year. That's your marketing, that's your program, that's in preparation for the next school year. We need to get the word out before the end of the school year. And a May, even an early May, date to come back to the table to revisit discussions, it sounds a little too close to the, too close to a deadline, too close to the end of the school year. I think we do need, I think it's reasonable to see if the selectmen can come in two weeks. We can, we can have this ongoing gathering, at the very least. I think there's, 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 there are broad questions, and then there's specificities that could need to be worked out.
Okay, April seventh.
Two weeks sounds reasonable.
That's not part of the motion, and I'm not going to decide that time. Kelly?
Yeah, I would just like to get on the record, saying, I think if we're going to change these tuition rates for any tuitioning students, that we should change the rates for Sherman as well. I don't think anyone in term is going to argue with having a reduction in their rate. So, I think that goes without saying, in terms of fairness.
All right, Greg?
I'd like to offer amendment to the motion, because frankly...
Bam, bam!
Yeah, but, but frankly, what my concern is, I see the superintendent having to deal with this, and there's many other things on the superintendent's plate. I, I don't want some half-baked, uh, two-week-later thing, where we're just getting the same discussion two weeks from now, without anything. We're going to have some resolution on this. We ought to postpone it, and we have an opportunity to get some information from the business manager, from the superintendent. And I'm, I'm going to move, will you, second friendly, and then it's postponed discussion until after June first?
Oh, no, no. I don't need to amend my motion, I'm fine with it.
What was your motion? I don't remember the date. You said, you said, "Till we, till we deal with Sherman", and that's a year from now.
No, at the discretion of, you know, the superintendent, the business manager, and the chair, but, but soon enough, and we don't have to have...
I'll throw all my...
And, and if I might, has anyone looked at the agenda? We're actually supposed to go over the budget tonight, and it's twenty to ten. And we have a public hearing for the budget soon?
Well, point of order, a postponement amendment has to have a time, or a date, to which it's postponed. You just can't postpone it indefinitely.
I think it's good.
So, if she's postponing to the contract negotiations for Sherman, that's fine.
You can either withdraw your motion, and we'll just vote on Alan's motion, up or down, or specify a date.
I'd like April seventh to be nice.
I had suggested a date in that.
I would like a date in May as well. Seven days in May.
Do you know when the business meeting is?
Yes, it's May fifth. It's also the district, uh, meeting for the budget, and then we vote May sixth. But we can do it May, uh, fifth?
No. How about, what's the meeting after now?
We don't have a date for the budget.
The nineteenth?
I, I quite frankly think you risked the budget, not risked the budget, but you risked, uh, issues on the budget. If you start lowering, decreasing the rates, people start hearing that, that, you know, it's... We need to think about this. So, I would, I'm going to suggest May nineteenth. Is that your...
I will, I will add that to my, whatever net motion I make.
To postpone.
To postpone. The motion to postpone the, um, the original motion, until more information can be gathered, May nine, and, and planned on May nineteenth.
Susan?
Can we ask the selectmen to come in two weeks to give us the information, so we can be in a process of information gathering, instead of one enormous lump of clay to mold out on April, uh, May nineteenth?
Well, I would have, that's fine, but I mean, if they can come. But I would assume that it wouldn't be one enormous, we have, would have had a meeting, we would have had a report that we can act on, at May nineteenth. So, but that's fine. Yes, we can ask them to come in two weeks. I don't know what the meeting looks like. That would be April twenty-one.
April seven, April seven, seven.
Oh, in two weeks, okay, fine. We've got a, we've got a district hearing and a business meeting. All right. All right, so, is there anything else? Valerie's motion to postpone to May nineteenth. We moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Any abstentions, raise your hand.
Standing, because I'm confused, because that means my motion goes on the nineteenth, but it shouldn't, because we may have a whole different concept by then, in which case I can withdraw it then?
Yes.
All right, fine, whatever abstentions do.
All right. Motion, so it's continued to May nineteenth. And I, I, I mean what I said, this is not an attempt to avoid this. It's just, I want to make an informed decision. All right. Seven-two, to consider it appropriate to approve contract for All-Star Transportation, recommended by the finance committee.
Sumo.
Your second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Do we have some detail? Bob?
Yeah, I mean, your packet that you had, this is what I spent the last month or so negotiating with All-Star Transportation.
Terms are briefly?
Uh, sure. It's to increase the type-one, type-two over the next four, five years, four-point-four percent in fourteen, fifteen, and then four-point-two-six, two-point-eight-nine, two-point-nine-eight, three-point-three-seven in each of the subsequent years. And I did a comparison, and went out and got information both on existing contracts to see how that rate then per day would measure up, and went further to get the latest contracts that actually went to bid, to determine that, in fact, if you go bid this whole thing out again, the rate increases exponentially, and I went back to those districts, and in many cases, they went up by anywhere between fifteen to forty percent when they did that. Reason for not going and negotiating, you have the option to do it. We have no issues at all with the existing contractor, and they've been providing the proper service for the students of the district. To make the change to go to a full-bought bid is going to add more cost based on what the market, what happens in the marketplace. It's just the fact, it's almost like turning a trash rep. There's certain, there's only so many companies out there, and they won't come out to, it's not set up for them to make any kind of money if they have these isolated pockets. That's your problem.
Greg?
I think they, I've, I've looked at Bob's, uh, sheet here that he prepared, and frankly, based on the prices you're getting in other districts, I think it would be well advised to take our business manager up on this and to approve this. I, I think this makes a lot of sense. It gives us a little bit more stability over a fairly long horizon, uh, when you consider this. I, I think it's a great plan.
Susan?
Did we have the fuel clause in the prior, um, and is that forty-two in keeping with?
Forty-two, and it's, yeah, it is. In fact, we monitor it every month, and on an annual basis, and if there's any excess, they get billed back for it. So, we're covering, there's two different ways to do contracts. One's a, what's called a dry contract, and a wet contract, we own a wet semi-contract for forty-two. And those are the numbers that are comparable to what you see here. They're running their contracts the same way that we do here. So, I wanted to make sure we had comparable numbers.
Anything else? Peter?
I just have a question, Bob. We lease the buses?
Yep.
We, the buses are leased purchased, is what, what the situation is. And on the conclusion of the contract, the contractor then takes ownership of the, the vehicles. We're out of that business at that point. That keeps the price down.
We pay for the fuel also?
We pay for up to forty-two thousand gallons. Anything in excess of that is not ours, and, but I'm still trying to get that number down even lower.
The only question I would have for you is, I mean, we've been through this many years. The numbers that you have for these other contracts from the other regions, do you know if they include what we're doing?
They're, they're all lining up very similar to what we're doing, two-tier system, okay? Which means you're running the vehicles twice. That's how you, you measure these things.
But do they lease the buses? Do they, in other words, we're doing a lot, we're paying for a lot of things to help reduce the operating costs?
They do, and, and some of these, they do, and some of them, they don't. It's just a matter of what they're doing. Where they don't, they're running vehicles that are like twelve-years-old, fourteen-year-old vehicles. That's how they're keeping the price down.
Anything else? All right, there's a motion to approve the contract for All-Star Transportation as recommended by the finance committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven-point-three, consider it appropriate to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars from the Elementary Capital Nonrecurring Fund with a lease as detailed in the agenda. Total a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Sumo.
Your second? Second by Tony. Tony, did you want to speak to this, or any, no? Alan?
I don't, I know we have, um, we have issues, um, following the stipulations of the lease of May twenty-eleven, as far as our elementary, I forget what it's called, panel of folks, three from the towns, and three from the board. We're supposed to do walkthroughs each year, and I know that, um, the Facilities Committee and Greg have been trying to, trying to solve that, and I have my own ideas for a solution. But that aside, how did we get to this list this year?
These were items that, you know, there was a, there was an old list that was kicking around. There were items that got taken off that list, that got finished. There were items that got moved over to the capital budget, there were items that got moved back. And I think these are leftover items that were on the original list. Don, correct me if I'm wrong. I think these were items that were on the original list, and somehow migrated off and now come back. The, the, the problem I have with these is that they have not been approved by the process that's in the lease. And for that reason, I'm skeptical about going forward with them, because I think we're, we'd be approving something that is not in compliance with the lease we have with the town. I, I understand that there's a problem there, we've been trying to get, to deal with it. But I don't think the solution is to just willy-nilly approve things under the Elementary School Fund without following the rules that are in that lease. I think that's problematic, and I'm not going to vote in favor of this for that reason. For me, it's a legal reason. It's not, it's not, it has nothing to do with the merits. These are probably work-class repairs, and they probably should be made, but...
If, if I could continue on this line? If we could, you know, I feel the same way. These are all things that are important and need to be done. But I would wonder if, if, if to follow that lease for the first time in a couple of years, you know, each of us should at least go to our, our, you know, I guess I can do this myself, but, you know, we can go to our, our selectmen and, and, and run this by them in our own town buildings, at least. Greg, you could do this with Barbara. Tony, you could do this with, with Mark. I can do it with Curtis. And at least follow the law that way slightly, I mean, the, the, the lease that way slightly, because it would be one from each, one member from each town, and one, and three members from the board. At least cover it that way.
Well, there's another solution, which is when they come here for the meeting in a couple of weeks, we could sit them down and have this meeting. But, but I, but my concern is, is that that doesn't solve the problem, because for me, because it doesn't comply with the terms of the lease. And I think we can, it, it, for my money, it doesn't matter whether you short it this way or that way, you've shorted it.
Right, right, but that's, at least it's following the intent, if not the letter, of the, of the lease.
No, but it's not.
It's not, it's not really, because the intent was that all three should come together and make a reasoned decision on them. And that, that's what the intent of the lease is.
I would like to, I'd like to really enforce that with big guns next year, but at least to get these things done over the summer would be nice. My other question, I hate to say this, because I would love to see these buildings painted to say this, because I would love to see these buildings painted and paid for in this way, but is paint really a capital nonrecurring project?
You know, having heard from, I don't know the answer to that, but having heard from the Chair of the Facilities Committee, and I agree that the lease needs to be followed, and if we're not going to follow the lease, we need to amend the lease. I am, I would be very reluctant to approve these as an item. Pat, did you want to speak to any of this?
Well, the only thing that I want to speak to is that when we do our budget, Don gives us lists of things that need to be done. Bob and Don and I look at the list, take some things off, and then try to move some things either to the 1% fund or to the lease fund. So, these were the things directly related to the elementary schools that we thought would go into the lease fund. If you decide not to do that, either this money has to go back into the budget, this is not in my budget that I presented, which is going to raise the budget, or we don't do it, we take it off the list, or we put on the side until we get it in the lease fund. But it's not, you know, that's how it is right now.
Well, I think the concern is that the process hasn't been.
It might be. I have to ask this question. So, in other words, what you're saying, Pat, is these are your recommendations?
Yes.
Based on the fact that you have not received the report from the selectmen, because the lease does say, if they have done something by a given date.
Bingo.
The selectmen, it then gets dumped to the superintendent.
That's exactly.
So, I misunderstood that because I didn't see that stated that way. So, now I changed my opinion.
And I feel better about it too, and we can solve this for next year. I think would be great. However, I still am concerned that painting is not a capital nonrecurring expense. Can I have somebody convince me otherwise, please?
Well, the lease talks about the maintenance, maintenance of the building, okay? It doesn't necess, it, the name that we associated with the fund followed the 1% capital. But it's really, it's coming out of the maintenance of those facilities. We just called it Capital Nonre, Elementary Capital Nonrecurring Fund. That was the name we used.
The name kind of implies that it's capital nonrecurring.
Correct. But it was, you look inside the terms of the lease, even the very first list, and you saw it, was far beyond painting. I mean, these were replacing covers, all kinds of things.
Oh, right, right. But these things, one would think, wouldn't have to be.
Exactly. But it was the maintenance of the building from the money put into the lease is what it was. I, I use that terminology for the fund itself, but it's driven out of the lease.
Tony?
The reason we're in this situation is that after the major repair project that we did on the three schools, when we tried to get people from the three towns to come to these meetings, but to go to the reviews, no one showed up. It was, they were happy with, I'm assuming they were happy with the way things were, and there weren't any other big issues, and so we tried it, I don't know, I think, four or five times, three or four or five times, I forgot which exactly, but, and there, no one was interested. So, it was just, then what we did was we started, about that time Greg got on board, and we started talking about modifying the lease, and that took longer than we expected, and so there's where we are.
Did anybody offer donuts?
Kelly?
$43,000 out of this 137,000 is for painting classrooms. Paint is in no way a capital nonrecurring charge. So, you either have to change how you define the fund, or you have to change, or to take those items off. But I also believe that this is not in the spirit of the lease agreement we have with these towns. We are supposed to maintain these buildings under our operating budget for basic everyday items like soap to wash the floors, or paint to paint the walls. These aren't, those are not capital nonrecurring charges. So, if, we are not in good faith maintaining these buildings the way we're supposed to be built, maintaining them, if we're throwing operational expenses into this capital fund. That's not the purpose for the capital. The capital fund is for things like expenses removal or septic repairs. It's not for painting, which is regular everyday wear and tear maintenance. So, I, I think that these towns expect more of us in terms of everyday maintenance of these buildings. This shouldn't be a special event. This should be in our operating budget.
Tony?
At the inception of this whole thing, it had nothing to do with capital expense or non-capital expense. It had to do with keeping, keeping the schools in good condition, and that included painting or paving or any number of things. It could be fixing the heating system, it could be putting in a new window, it could be painting the, the walls. I mean, that, that was what the, what the issues were back then. It was that you're not keeping up our schools. And so, we, this fund was created and so forth, and the lease was put together so that, to assure that those elementary schools would be taken care of and not go by the wayside, and not get in the budget, and so on and so forth. So, this money was set aside specifically for those three schools.
Alan?
Yeah, but remember that it was, it was, there was always the reminder that we did have a maintenance budget. We were always reminded in those discussions, hey, we have a maintenance budget, we are maintaining, you know, don't forget. We, and when we talked about what was the decision to, to, you know, we talked about percentage of budget and this and that, we finally came across the flat $100,000. There were, there were conversations about, well, our maintenance budget's already higher than that, so whatever, you know. So, I think it really was attuned to the fact that it was a nonrecurring budget for, for bigger things that weren't taken care of in maintenance, that would be, you know, issues that, first of all, from what I understand, we can't hold an account of taxpayers' money unless it's for capital nonrecurring expenses. That's part of it too. So, I really think in about two or three different ways, this has to be capital nonrecurring. So, what I would suggest is.
This is a lease, this is a fund for the lease.
Right, but it's a legal fund, and we can't have any funds that aren't capital nonrecurring.
I understand.
We couldn't have, we couldn't have established an illegal fund in that lease. So.
Well, just as a point, when you talk about painting, last year you approved $26,000 of paint.
I may have been absent that year.
Well, I'm saying, the year before that, there were things of replacing flagpoles.
Well, that's different.
Repairing a fence, metal fence.
I was drunk, officer. No, but really.
But it was to maintain.
That's repairing the flagpole, you don't have to do that every year. But, but point is, there are issues which we can get to now, or if it's too late. There are issues on the capital facilities list on page nine of our budget that we could move into this area and move painting out, and it would be fine. Like stage risers and a portion, if, if anything, of, of, of heating conversion. Um, you know, we could move that in and move 43,000 of paint into the budget and be done.
Greg?
Both Tony and Alan are correct. And Alan makes a very good suggestion to get over the hump. The, the reason why they have to be capital nonrecurring is because it's this, we park this money in the 1% fund. It's actually a piece of the 1% fund.
No, no, it's separate.
Then how do we, but then how do we reserve it?
Oh, it's separate, it's similar.
Because it's reserved under the lease in conjunction with the three towns. They, they actually established that fund to hold that money to make future repairs.
For capital nonrecurring.
Well.
I never understood that. I just don't understand that.
There's two separate funds.
We have a 1% fund, which is also.
That's.
Capital nonrecurring, right?
That is strictly capital nonrecurring.
It is.
Others for the, driven out of the lease.
I mean, there may be a great way of handling it, but I, my understanding from reading that provision of the statute is, the only thing this district can carry over from year to year is a fund equal to 1% of the budget for any given year. So, if you've got a $21 million budget, it's $210,000. And that's all we can carry over. So, if we carry over $100,000 on the lease, you can only carry another 121 on the.
The lease is distributed, the lease is very specific for three buildings, driven from that lease document agreement and how it gets spent. It's not covered under any statute. Okay? The 1% is definitely under state statute. This is a local agreement.
If I might.
Hold on, please. Peter?
Has anybody complained about us fixing up their buildings with money that the board puts into this fund every year? Has anybody complained? Has any selectmen complained? Has any citizen complained? Why are we getting so technical? All we hear is that people want to save these buildings, and here we are, board members who have spoken vociferously about saving their building, and here we are fixing them up, and they're complaining about us fixing them up. I mean, give me a break.
Valerie?
Each budget year we do this, and we've been complaining about this big pot of money that hasn't been tapped into. And poor Tony's been trying to, to indeed have a list, which we now have in lieu of the, the townspeople actually doing their duty. And I don't get why we're reinventing the wheel here at 10 o'clock at night. We've done this again and again and again. Some items are covered by the lease money. The elementary school needs are covered by the lease money in addition to a course of provision for maintenance of buildings, and separate from the 1%, which we know is really restrictive to capital. So, I don't get at 10 o'clock at night why all of a sudden this is news to people and that we're parsing it. It's a good use of about $500,000 that hasn't been spent. And shame on us for, for, you know, not spending the money appropriately.
All right. Madam Secretary, is there a motion on the floor?
There is.
There's a motion to approve the spending of this money. It's been moved and seconded. All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Kelly?
Yeah, I, I can answer Peter and Valerie as to why it's inappropriate to put the $43,000 worth of painting in this. This is an operational expense. Painting is an everyday wear and tear repair. It's not a capital expenditure. And Valerie, you're an accountant, you know that.
And I'm not an accountant, but in my house, I do it like every 20 years, and it's capital.
But it's.
Good answer.
It's something that we're expected to do on a daily basis. And I would suggest that the reason that it's, it's not a good idea to have it in the capital nonrecurring budget is that something else might better go there. These buildings could use other things. If 43,000 of the painting is properly put in the operational maintenance budget, then we could use 43,000 to do something else at those buildings that might actually be a capital improvement. That, you know, you can't tell me there aren't more things that can be done there that really are capital improvements, whether it's at the driveway or to safety or anything else. If we take it out of this fund, we will have it available for any of those reasons.
All right, thank you. Tony?
I'd like to move the question.
Well, I don't know if that's necessary.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion to move the question. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, we have a motion, the motion to move the question passes. We have a motion on the floor. To authorize an expenditure of an amount not to exceed $137,000 from the Elementary Capital Nonrecurring Fund for the lease as detailed in the agenda, total $137,000. All those in favor, raise your hand. What's the count, Madam Secretary?
Six in favor, two opposed, and two abstaining.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you. I'm going to try something bold here on item 74, to consider it appropriate to adopt the 2014-15 recommended budget. In the past, our practice, I have asked Valerie if she would take us through the budget page by page. I wonder if there's anyone prepared to make a motion to adopt the budget.
Some of.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Do you really want to talk about this for two hours? We don't have to talk about it at all. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, I think.
Listen, I don't intend to rush anybody. If we, if people would rather, the problem is, not the problem, an issue we have to deal with is we have a district hearing on the 7th. So, if we're going to do this at another time, we're going to have to call a special meeting.
Well, I have no problem with calling a special meeting, and, I mean, I'm a bottom-line board member, and, and sometimes I don't really care for going through the budget line item by line item because it's just put together by the people who know what they need. However, I don't think it looks very good. Public relation-wise, just to sit here and say we had a budget and bang, we're going to approve it, without taking a look and let some of the people who put that budget together explain to us how certain components of that budget were put together. It seems to me, very rarely I have ever been at a board meeting in the last 30 years where someone put a motion on the floor to approve the budget and it got approved. Now, I haven't been following this board.
Well, it just happened. Well, there's a motion to move the second. I agree with you, it's not common. It's a .54 proposed percentage increase. It was presented to us by the superintendent. She did take us through it, cursor early. I, we've had time to consider it. I have reviewed the budget. So, the people can vote how they may.
What do we have scheduled for our retreat on Monday?
We have a full, we have the Common Core State Stand, we have the S-Backs, and we have the, hopefully the final board handbook. So, we have a big meeting.
Which can wait, everyone budgets it. So, I've moved the postpone to next Monday, the 31st, and have an actual budget meeting.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion, motion to postpone to the 31st?
Yes. Question. Well, I mean, if there's been, this, this meeting has been planned for some long time. I mean, is there a way we can abridge some of the agenda you've been working on and then attack this, or how can we do it? We're meeting at 5:00.
Yeah, I mean, we can.
We're meeting at 5:00?
Yeah, 5:00 on, uh, March 31st. We can, you know, we can work for two hours and then have a budget meeting at 7:00.
You could do four hours. See, I just figured, I could just figure you could postpone the Common Core and the S-Back, but would you?
Well, I just, I, I don't, the issue with postponing is that they're just, you know, very timely, and, you know, we keep getting, you know, hit with people who want answers about questions and Common Core and the testing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I just, you know, I just don't want to put it off because, you know, once April and May come, it's very busy for people. And no one, you know, ever wants to come back.
All right, is there anything else on the motion to postpone? Greg?
Well, I mean, can we do at 5:00, have your meeting?
Yeah, and then at 7:00.
And then do we have to post a 7:00 budget meeting?
Yes.
And then we can hopefully, you know, if everyone reads and comes prepared, I mean, there's some pretty straightforward stuff in here, and the percentage increase is very small. Maybe we can have a good thorough discussion, but in about an hour.
Anything else on the motion to postpone?
If people have specific questions and they get it to us, we can maybe shorten it for you a little bit by bringing the, the answers that you're looking for at that same time. Just get the questions through the superintendent. We'll sort them all out, and I'm sure you may have other questions as well from those questions, but maybe that'll help to shorten your meeting a little bit.
Greg?
Whatever you need done.
I'm not sure we need to postpone it. I think we could, we could cover this budget in about three minutes, and I'll tell you how you could do that. The superintendent could tell us, or Bob could tell us, what the percentage increase in each category on the first page here, the 100, 200, 300, to the end. I think you're going to find it's about a 2% increase on salaries, where the total budget increase is half a percent because other things have been cut. You can go through this line by line and look at everything in there, and I have. But I'm telling you that there isn't anything that's any massive changes, and that the big thing is, is that some things have been cut in order to keep the general overall budget down. You could have a discussion of whether you think some things should be restored, but that's really where it is.
I think it's the board's job to show some due diligence here. And I do think we could get through this rather quickly and intelligently, but I, I think we owe the work, the hard work that went into it to have a separate conversation. And I don't think it's going to be difficult.
All right. Is there anything else on the motion to postpone to March 31st? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Any abstentions? What's the count?
Seven in favor, three opposed.
All right, the motion passes, so we'll discuss this on March 31st after our retreat.
I'm just going to stand at 1:00.
One thing, basically. As wonderful as it is to hear about well depth and septic issues in two towns or three towns and affordable housing, I don't think we'd be at this late hour if we concentrated on what we can handle and not what towns have to handle. That is only.
Thank you. Item eight, we do have an executive session, so please don't leave, hopefully make it clear. Item eight, opportunity for the public to comment on the. Is there anyone who wants to address this? No. All right, then, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Point order.
Yes.
It's one of my questions, you can't post an executive session on every agenda, what you want to speak about. It's a matter of attention, but that's.
All right. Doc, what is the, I think we do have to at least state what the item.
It's a personnel matter, but if you don't want to have it now, we can have it next Monday.
I believe that we have executive session.
There's a motion. Wait a minute, wait a minute, please. We have moved it. There's been a motion made to go into executive session. Was it seconded?
No, she just says.
Who made the motion?
Alan did.
I did, yeah.
You want to make your motion?
Well, wait, wait, I just want to clarify, is this, we went through this with counsel a couple of years ago because we didn't have it on the agenda. And then it turns out we had personnel or legislative, litigatory issues that came up, then we said, well, that's what the exec, I don't know. All I know is we left, we now very often have it.
It's always on there. You can't do that.
Well, Tom Mooney, when I went to the CAVE conference, said that you can have executive
session on your agenda.
As an open slot or does it have to be named?
Yes, it is. No, this is an open slot and then if you want.
But you have to, to move to go into it, it has to be for one or other condition.
So maybe when you move personnel.
Well, that's the reason it doesn't have to be stated on the, come on.
Alan, would you have accepted a friendly amendment to your motion to go into executive session to discuss the personnel matter with the superintendent?
I would. Her, her issue is that it wasn't on the agenda.
It's wrong because I'm telling you, I disagree. That's all I'm saying. I disagree.